Okay. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated April 17th, 2024. It was subsequently noticed on April 17th that we were moving it to today. I just want to note that for the record, and it was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. Palowski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Allen?
Here. Okay, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Harriel, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notices regarding hearings, comments, and closed session.
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes in length.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our regular and closed-session meeting on March 19th, 2024, and April 2nd, 2024?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, great. And I would like to also approve the minutes of the community forum of April 9th, 2024.
I'm sorry, I just have a quick question. I know for the minutes, Rosie, I know I owe you a statement, is it okay that I still add that afterwards?
It's still noted in the minutes, I just need your statement.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay. Sorry, yes.
That's okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Earlier today, a few members of council and I proudly attended the groundbreaking ceremony for a research and development building at Kenview's new global headquarters, a pivotal event for Kenview and a momentous occasion for the entire Summit community. The event was attended by Governor Murphy and his team, Kenview corporate leadership, and state legislators, among others. In my remarks, I described Kenview's choice to establish Roots and Summit as a key moment for economic growth, promising new opportunities and innovations within our community, underscoring Summit's growing reputation as a prime location for business. We extend a warm welcome to Kenview, anticipating a future of shared success and prosperity. It will be exciting to see the positive impact this new neighbor will have on our community. Each week, I record a new Mondays with the Mayor video. This week's update focused on bicycle safety and the importance of always wearing a helmet when riding a bike, no matter what age. While it is only legally required for people under the age of 18, I strongly recommend this for everyone. Next week, I will be focusing on Mental Health Awareness Month, which is in May, and what we have planned here in Summit. Look for more information about that on the city website and in my videos on the City of Summit YouTube channel and on social media. The Summit PAL Annual Fishing Derby is this coming Saturday, April 27th, and Sunday, April 28th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the municipal golf course at 189 River Road. The pond at the golf course will be fully stocked with more than 1,000 rainbow trout, including 10 prize fish, which are over 21 inches in length. Attendees are asked to bring a fishing rod and reel. Bait and tackle will be available for purchase. Admission to the Fishing Derby is free, and all residents are invited to attend. Summit Municipal Golf Course membership is not required. The event will take place, rain or shine, and the Summit PAL will be providing free hot dogs and soda for all attendees.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Administrator Rogers.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder, the 2024 Municipal Budget Public Hearing will take place on Tuesday, March 7th, at 7:30 p.m., right here in the council chambers.
May 7th. May 7th.
May 7th, I'm sorry.
Good catch, Councilman.
What did I say?
March.
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 Oh, my God, May, so sorry. After final construction work is completed on Oxbow Lane this week, milling and paving are expected to be scheduled for next week. The dates for this phase of work will be shared on the city website and social media once finalized, and the contractor will notify residents in the affected area prior to the start of milling and paving. The Office of Health and Vital Statistics has launched a new online portal for animal license registrations. The deadline to renew dog and cat licenses is May 31st. Applications can be submitted online using the portals for either dog or cat licenses at cityofsummit.org. After approving the application, a member of the Health Department will send the applicant a payment request by email. Online payments must be made by credit card. And then finally, the next Summit Free Market event will be held on Friday, April 26th, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the transfer station. Summit residents must have a permit to access the transfer station to attend. Permits can be purchased online through the City of Summit Parking Services Agency at cityofsummit.org. Visitors are limited to 60 continuous minutes at each Summit Free Market event. For more information on the Summit Free Market, please go to summitfreemarket.org. And that's all I have. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Okay, so I would like to say happy Administrative Professionals Day to our incredible team behind the scenes at City of Summit. We recognize and appreciate the dedication, hard work, and invaluable contributions of our administrative personnel across every city department. Their commitment keeps our city running smoothly and efficiently day in and day out, and makes Summit a better place for everyone. Summit's Earth Day cleanup on April 13th was a great success, with 242 residents and members of different community groups and clubs coming together to help clean up 10 public sites around the city. Volunteers collected approximately 1,200 pounds of trash, which is incredible. I know. And peanut gallery. And applied 10 yards of wood chips to the trails at Martin Brook Park and Wilson Park. Thank you to everyone who volunteered their time for this important cause, and of course, we want to thank Donna Patel, who drives and helps manage this important event every year. The Summit Farmer's Market returns on Sunday, April 28th. The Farmer's Market is held weekly on Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the park and shop lot on the corner of Woodland Avenue and DeForest Avenue. For more information on vendors and farmer market events, go to summittowntown.org. Okay. Now we have a proclamation. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Chair.
I'm going to ask Gretchen Boger O'Brien and Laura Nanda from CASA to come forward. Whereas the City of Summit in the state of New Jersey recognizes the problem of child abuse and neglect. Yeah, I don't think it's on. Is that better?
That's better.
There we go.
Maybe start over.
I will. Okay, so we have Gretchen Boger O'Brien from CASA. Whereas the City of Summit in the state of New Jersey recognizes the problem of child abuse and neglect and is committed to helping its victims. And whereas all children deserve to have safe, nurturing, and healthy homes that foster their well-being. And whereas court-appointed special advocates, CASA, has provided volunteers to advocate for children throughout Union County who have been removed from their homes due to neglect or abuse. And whereas CASA is focused on protecting the safety and well-being of Union County's foster children, defending them from harm, and ensuring they are provided with the court-ordered services they need. And whereas, beginning this month, April 2024, CASA of Passaic and Union Counties will operate under the name Child Focus to fully support the multi-program approach to mitigate the negative effects of child abuse. And now therefore I, Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 be recognized as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Summit, and urge all residents to become aware of the work and mission of CASA and encourage our community to support the efforts to raise awareness of the program and the need for the community members to provide a voice for the children. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 24th of April in the year 2024. Thank you.
Short girl problems. I'm going to try to, okay, so on my back. But I'm speaking to everybody. I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, and to the city council for helping us bring awareness to this important issue. Gretchen Boger O'Brien, and I'm proud to work with the nonprofit Child Focus, and through which Court-appointed Special Advocates Program operates. I've been with CASA for 12 years and have been an advocate myself, and although my case closed years ago, the child actually was in foster placement here in Summit, and she's now reunified with mom, and I send her a birthday card every year, and we're still in touch. Sorry. So it's really a life-altering opportunity and a program, and we're thankful for Summit's contribution. We have advocates who live in Summit, we have funders from Summit, and we are working to reach all of the children in care. Just last year, we had just about 300 children in foster care, just in Union County, and hundreds of them still need a CASA volunteer, so they do not have an advocate yet. Children living in foster care are doing so through no fault of their own, but their lives are forever altered. The process of being removed from their family is traumatic, and these children have been through multiple abusive experiences that most of us can only imagine. One important aim of the CASA program is, through advocacy in the family court system, to mitigate the negative impact that trauma and abuse has on a child's life. Our hope is that through the support of a kind, caring, well-trained CASA volunteer, we will ensure each and every one of these children is on a path to a safe and happy home. We are proud to say, as I noted, that many of our advocates and funders are residents of Summit. Through this proclamation and through building awareness of the realities of child abuse right in our community, we hope that even more individuals from Summit will take the opportunity to learn more about becoming a CASA volunteer. We need you, we have hundreds of children waiting. We also really need men, I'm going to make that pitch, and we welcome anybody to just come and learn more and potentially become a volunteer, and we thank you for this recognition during April. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go to historical minute.
Thank you, Council President. When we had to change the meeting from Tuesday to Wednesday, our original presenter had a game, so he couldn't come, but thankfully, his big sister's here to pinch-hit. So I'd like to introduce Claire Palowski. She is a senior at Kent Place, heading to SMU next year, and the prettiest girl in the whole world.
Thank you, Dad, and thank you very much for having me here today. I'd like to take this opportunity to share a little bit with you all about Bryant Pond Park. A man named Oliver Hayes owned a homestead at 215 Springfield Avenue in the 1800s. He amassed 270 acres in the area between Morris Turnpike and Springfield Avenue and from Hobart Avenue to the railroad. The caretaker of the Hayes estate in 1859 was William H. Bryant, son of Aaron Bryant. In about 1867, William Bryant built a home on what is now Bryant Parkway on land farmed by his father, Aaron Bryant, and his grandfather Cornelius Bryant before that. In operating this generational family estate, William Bryant built a dam to create a 12-acre Springfield lake that abounded in fish and was surrounded by spacious woodland. He named it Spring Lake. Today, we know it as Bryant Pond and the land surrounding it Bryant Pond Park. Bryant ran a mill with a huge wheel he used to grind wheat, rye, corn, and buckwheat. He also built two large ice houses on the property, some obtained practically all of its ice supply from the pond. In the winter, residents skated on the pond and used it to row boats and fish during the warmer months. Residents picnicked free of charge on the grounds, and it even became a destination for some. In the 1880s, Mr. John B. McGrath operated the Spring Lake Inn, now the Huntley Tavern. Side note, Mr. McGrath gave some its first uniformed baseball club, the Old Red Stockings, who played across the street from the inn west of the park. Union County acquired the property owned and operated by the Bryant family for generations in 1930 and commissioned the famed Olmsted Brothers landscape architects to design the park. According to the design on Springfield Avenue, at a spot some may mistake for Morris Avenue, the Olmsted Brothers envisioned a pastoral, open space for passive and unprogrammed active recreation centered around Bryant Pond. The park was to be a central feature of the Bryant Pond Parkway, part of a countywide Parkway system envisioned by the Olmsted Brothers and the Union County Park Commission. For nearly a century now, Bryant Pond Park has provided the Hill City open space to enjoy so many outdoor activities from sledding to fishing to skating and to walking. In recent times, our beloved pond has suffered a buildup of sediment and unwanted vegetation, weeds, grass, and the like. Sadly, as the pond has grown shallower, the supply of fish has diminished, and the beautiful heron that once frequented the park has left for fishier waters, but hopefully will come back soon. You may have noticed the arrival of heavy machinery in recent weeks. Union County has finally set the stage to deepen the pond and restore the jewel of Summit. Work began on April 17th and should be completed by midsummer. Bryant Pond Park is listed on the New Jersey Register of Historic Places. I credit Edmund B. Raftus and his history titled Summit, New Jersey: From Poverty Hill to the Hill City for much of the information and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, so next we have a presentation on affordable housing from our city planner, Joe Burgess. He is a special master and a lifetime achievement awardee from the Blaustein School at Rutgers. Did I say that right?
You did.
Okay. And tonight, Joe is going to outline for us the planning process, which is going to be closing out of 2024, how we're looking ahead to 2025, and tonight, it's less about the law of S-50, but how the timeline is going to play out from the new law that was passed. So just want to be clear on that.
Yes, thank you. I just have one quick question.
Yeah.
Do you have this historic minute at all your council meetings?
Oh.
We try to.
That's fantastic. I've never seen that, and I've been doing this for 40 years. I've never seen another municipality do that. I think it's a great idea.
We're special. Thank you. Council, I will give Councilman Palowski credit, he really wanted to bring it back this year, so.
And I was only copying what former council president Rob Rubino had put in place in the past, so.
Very, very good. Went to a much more mundane, but also very serious topic. Just about a month ago, the governor signed into law new affordable housing legislation. It dramatically changes the way we deal with affordable housing and the process going forward. So I want to really touch upon two things, just identify some of the major changes in the law, and then talk about the timeline, because it's a very tight timeframe within which we have to take actions. The most significant, and I'm just going to touch upon half a dozen specifics, of the significant changes. One is that legislation has formally abolished COA. Now, I know when I say this in other venues, people tend to applaud, but the reality is, when we look back on the first and second round of COA, which is the council on affordable housing, which up until recently oversaw all affordable housing work in the state, we complained about first and second round initially, but I think now we're going to be looking back upon it as the golden age of affordable housing, because the regulations were about this thick, and it was pretty easy to manage. Now we've got close to 100 pages of legislation, and more is to come. Secondly, the legislation dramatically tightens the timeframes for various actions, and we're going to get into that in a moment. Critically, well, whereas historically municipalities were able to get a definite designation and complete immunity from affordable housing lawsuits, once you got your housing plan approved, that is no longer the case right now. That has been replaced with something called presumptive validity, is a much more watered-down version of your full and complete protection and immunity from litigation. And any interested party can now bring a challenge before what's called the program, and I'll get into that in a moment, alleging that despite the issuance of a compliance certificate that you would now get, that either your town's determination of what your affordable housing number is, or your housing element and fair share plan itself, or the ordinances implementing the housing plan are in violation of the Mount Laurel Doctrine, and then you would be fighting with those litigants, not in the court, but before the new organization called the program and the statute. Now, the legislation also imposes significant new costly responsibilities on the part of municipalities. A lot of it has to do with data gathering and responses to challenges and how you deal with that. It also imposes significant new limitations on bonus credits that we've all been able to rely upon in the past. What I would like to do is start, oh, and the final thing is, it creates what's called this Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program, and then throughout the legislation, it just is referred to as "the program," which sounds very Orwellian, but I'll leave that go for now. But I want to start with the very aggressive timeframes within which we have a number of steps to deal with. And I know some people might wonder, jot that information down, but I made copies for everybody on the down flip, so you won't have to do that.
Thank you.
Do you have enough? Yeah, yes.
Okay. What's interesting is the fourth round technically begins July 1, 2025, but with this new legislation, you actually have certain things you must complete in 2024. And it starts off with, by June 18th of this year, you are obligated to provide DCA, the former Community Affairs, with a detailed accounting of all non-residential development fees that you've ever collected. And in this, you see some of the details that have to be provided. By mid-September of this year, you have to do the same thing for all the residential development fees that you've collected. Now, I think Matt and his office are going to be instrumental in helping putting all that together. I hope Matt is still here.
Matt, you're.
Matt, you're going to be very busy.
I appreciate that.
Also, by September 16th, all municipalities are going to now be required to provide DCA with a whole host of additional affordable housing information about what you've accomplished in the past, and they want it broken down into categories that we've never had to deal with before. So it's a lot more detailed in terms of characteristics on housing types, tenure of housing, affordability levels, the number of bedrooms in the affordable units, the date they were approved, and occupancy restrictions that you may have imposed on these units. Now, in addition to that, it asks for information on construction starts, certificates of occupancy, and the like. I'm not going to read all of it, it's there, but for the council, you can see what needs to be done. Now, by October 20th, DCA is going to be publishing their estimates of what your housing obligation is there. What's interesting, it's a non-binding assessment of what the number is, because you, as a municipality, then have an opportunity to examine the information and decide whether or not you want that number adjusted. Now, by January 31st of 2025, you are obligated to adopt, and it's the council that would do this, adopt a binding resolution setting forth either your determination that DCA had it correct, or what you think your new determination of the number should be. Now, interestingly enough, within 48 hours of that determination, you are obligated to file that information with the program. And the legislation actually says that if you don't do it within 48 hours, you lose your immunity until you prepare your housing plan. So it's critical that we file that information in a timely manner. By February 28th, any interested party may file an action with the program challenging the municipality's adopted fourth-round obligation. If there are no challenges, then on March 1st, the municipality's agreed upon fourth-round number is in fact established by default. However, if there are challenges, then the program is required to make a determination on such challenges by the end of March. Now, every professional planner and lawyer involved in affordable housing is questioning this. I will tell you that under the third round, approximately 400 municipalities participated in the third round. I know for some of the towns we represent, and I'll cite Parsippany as one, we had over 15 objections to our plan, and it took years to resolve. Now, this legislation says the program's going to resolve all objections statewide in 31 days. I'm surprised there wasn't more laughter with that, but that's what the regulations say. By June 30th of 2025, you are required to adopt your housing element and fair share plan. And again, within 48 hours, you are obligated to file that with the program, and if you don't, you lose your immunity. So there's steps built into this process that are designed specifically, I think, to hurt the municipalities. But you have to pay attention to these time deadlines. By August of 30, by the end of August of 2025, any interested party can then file an objection to the plan, and then you would again appear before the program to try to resolve any disputes that you may have. And if all goes well, by March 15th of 2025, or 26, excuse me, you will have adopted all the zoning ordinances and implementation mechanisms designed to implement your housing element and fair share plan. I'm going to be sitting down with Matt over the next couple of weeks to iron out exactly what information has to be provided by June and then September, so at least we'll get started on the process. Now, in addition to that, I just want to touch upon one or two other issues. In terms of the process, DCA, as I said, is going to prepare housing need numbers for your housing region, and it's a four-county region, as you know, it's Essex, Union, Morris, and Warren County. And then they distribute that affordable housing obligation to all the municipalities in the region, and there are 98 municipalities that get the number distributed. They also will determine what your municipal perspective, resident perspective obligation is, and this will have to be done, as spelled out in the regulations, in accordance with the Judge Jacobson decision in that Mercer County case, where she had a 41-day trial analyzing what the proper methodology should be. Now, there is some flexibility in terms of assessment that's built into that methodology, so that's why the regulations always also allow you to analyze the numbers and see if you agree or not. Now, in terms of... And then they distribute that affordable housing obligation to all the municipalities in the region. And there are 98 municipalities that get the number distributed. They also will determine what your municipal perspective, present and prospective obligation is, and this will have to be done, as spelled out in the regulations, in accordance with the Judge Jacobson decision in that Mercer County case where she had a 41-day trial analyzing what the proper methodology should be. Now, there is some flexibility in terms of assessment that's built into that methodology, so that's why the regulations always, also allow you to analyze the numbers and see if you agree or not. Now, in terms of the preparation of the housing element and fair share plan itself, it pretty much follows along the lines of what we've done in the past for you, but there are some additional, there's some additional information that they now require that was never part of the plan. In terms of the way in which credits are being provided, that has changed dramatically. Most significantly, rental bonus credits, which had always been part of the process, have been eliminated, and that's critical for a lot of municipalities. There are some rental, some bonus credits that have been added in an effort to encourage special needs housing, which is a very significant benefit. There are bonus credits also added regarding those units that may be within one-half mile of a train station, and you get half a unit credit for each of those units. The age-restricted bonus, the number of age-restricted units that you can get credit for has been increased from 33% to 50%, which also is a plus. There are some gray areas that still have to be ironed out in the regulations. I already mentioned one. There's a few others which I won't bore you with. But in summary, you know, there is a lot of work to be done, and let me just tick off what we need to do, and it's important for the municipality to be very proactive in this regard. For example, one of the things we will have to do is start by evaluating our third-round plan and decide what has worked and what hasn't, because that's one thing that the new regulations say you might have to adjust if you find that there are certain components that haven't been generating affordable housing. You have to gather the information on your housing trust fund monies and identify it, as I had said earlier. One of the things I have suggested to other municipalities is start immediately by preparing all the background information. There's a lot of census data, demographic information that has to be included in the housing plan that is easy to do and get out of the way. So when the housing numbers are published, we can hit the ground running trying to figure out how are we going to address that number. One of the things I also suggest is, let's look at our vacant land adjustment. We undoubtedly know that whatever the number is that DCA publishes, it can be adjusted downward because we just simply don't have sufficient vacant developable land to accommodate a large number. So we should look at what we did for the round three plan and see where it has to be adjusted. We are also now obligated to look at potential develop, developed sites and what may become available for redevelopment, small R, not big R, redevelopment during the fourth round, and then how that would factor into what we think our realistic development potential may be for the fourth round. One other factor that you should recognize is there's the state plan is about to be published with a new, a new state plan is going to be published within about a month's time. There's a cross-acceptance process that's built into that process that affects your affordable housing issues, and the most significant thing for you is to understand that you must file with the county that you want to get involved in the process. And the importance of that is because it's the county that does the negotiation on your behalf with the state. You do not get to negotiate with the state directly. So in previous years, that was also the case. It was shocking how few municipalities actually participated, but the benefit is that if they certify your plan of the way you're consistent with the state plan, you are able to participate in a lot more funding programs in comparison to those municipalities that aren't participating. So there's a significant benefit to you. And there is an adjustment process. If the state initially recommends certain things, it's through the cross-acceptance process that we can get the plan adjusted and the plan maps adjusted on the city's behalf. I just briefly summarized about 100 pages of legislation, but I think it gives you a jumpstart on what this is all about. We will be preparing a more detailed report for you summarizing this in greater detail.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Joe. I just wanted to see if the council members had any quick questions as a follow-up.
Joe, thank you for coming. Always such knowledge that we learn from you every day. The state plan was last done in, was it 2000, I think? From what I understand, the cross-acceptance plan failed a few years after that, and, correct me if I'm wrong, was cross-acceptance, did it not work in 2005 or '04, if you remember?
The problem with the cross-acceptance process is that at the, at the initial publication in 2000, it was a 426-page document, and then they realized that was pretty hefty, and that's probably why only roughly 100 municipalities participated. So then they prepared a second document that was a whopping 34 pages, and everybody thought that was simply a joke because it just didn't carry enough weight or heft to really detail what the plan really was all about, and that's why it simply died on the vine at that point.
And the reason I bring that up, I think it's important, we've talked about a lot of the deadlines and the requirements for the fees, but who is, and I know we've talked about this in committee, in the Mount Laurel Committee, but whose responsibility will it be to jumpstart the planning board on the endorsement process and the cross-acceptance process and that checklist that you've provided us?
The next time, yeah, I actually, we've provided the council, and I believe the planning board, with the checklist and the manual, and there was a third document, oh, and our memo.
Okay, great.
And the next time we meet with the planning board, I want to get that on the agenda to discuss it with them.
Okay, perfect. So the planning board has their marching orders as far as that's concerned?
They will.
They will. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. One clarification for me was the region. Can you just talk about what region we're in and who's in that region with us?
The state is broken up into six housing regions. Your housing region, if I'm not mistaken, is identified as two or four, I forget now. Two, thank you. And as I said, it's Union, Essex, Morris, and Warren Counties. 98 municipalities in that four-county region. We don't know what the numbers will be yet, but what this DCA is going to do is look at the housing, affordable housing need obligation of those four county, four counties, and then whatever that number is, it gets distributed through a formula to all the individual municipalities. And it's based in large measure on your percentage of population versus the region's percentage, and a whole bunch of other indices is broken up that same way.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We look forward to having you back.
Well, thank you, and thank you for putting me on early.
Oh, you do. Wait, we do have questions, sorry.
So presumptive validity, right? We use that now with set-asides, right?
No, the set-aside is simply the percentage of affordable units in a development that would be set aside for low and moderate income households. The presumptive validity issue is replacing what was formerly your judgment of compliance and reposed from the courts, and instead of being given through the courts full and complete immunity from affordable housing litigation because you've proven that your plan affirmatively addresses your obligation, now they're saying the best that you'll get is this new term called presumptive validity, which doesn't protect you to the same extent that we had protection before. And it, built into it is the ability for any interested party to challenge your housing plan, your determination of what the housing obligation is, and even the way in which your ordinances are designed to implement your housing plan.
Because the flip side of that is that the municipality used to use that in terms of builders who wanted to build. We would say that, you know, it's presumptive validity, that there's a set-aside, it's not challengeable, right? But now it's kind of the other way around.
Yeah, it's kind of turned the whole concept on its head at this point, because the one thing we always talked about was the fact that participate in the project because the end result is such a positive, the end result is you're not going to get sued during the entirety of the round, because you've proven to the court that you're affirmatively addressing your obligation, and now all of a sudden, you don't have that luxury anymore.
And my last question is, with the units, the number of units, does the court look at it as, you know, an axiomatic basis of truth, meaning these units come out and, you know, it's like one and one is two, right? We all knew that to be, to be true. So the courts say, well, there's 1,000 units. We are assuming that this is true, and this is what Summit has to do. Is there, is, is the negotiation with the court, do we, is there, or is it with the county, or just, can you just explain that?
Now, the negotiation will be with Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program. And it's supposed to be, and it, excuse me, the legislation indicates that initially it's going to be populated by retired judges, and they will have staff, and they will have, it's built into the legislation, it's said special masters. However, just this week, and I received letters from the various judges that I represented, the Supreme Court just changed that term. So now it's called special adjudicator. It doesn't roll off the tongue as easy, but, so, it's a new term that will be used throughout the state. But they will have, the program will have staff to assist the judges in reviewing all these cases. But it's an effort to get it out of the court that they've established the program, because it hopefully would be less costly to the municipalities.
Could I ask three quick questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
So number one, thank you. Number one would be, so between October 20, 2024, and January 31, 2025, imagining the possibility that the state obligation is higher than what the city might think is reasonable, instead of having to enter into that dispute resolution program, is it possible to just simply have a conversation, meet somewhere in the middle, and then the city can submit a, a plan that's that number, right? Is that, is that possible?
Yes, and the only fly in the ointment is that, again, any interested party can raise a question and dispute or challenge that.
So then, it's, it's correct, right, that we have to make up any missed obligation from our third round in the fourth round, correct? That's number two.
Well, that's not completely clear.
Okay.
You know, I, this is going to get into the weeds a little bit, but it's very important. The regulation actually says, and I want to get the correct quote. I gather there's a bunch of lawyers here in the room, so. Vacant land adjustment towns, you have to identify sufficient parcels likely to redevelop during the current round to address at least 25% of the prospective need obligation that has been adjusted. Now, a number of people are going around the state saying, oh my God, we have to do 25% of our unmet need, which would mean, and I'll just make up numbers here, if your obligation was 500, and you did a vacant land adjustment to prove that you only have to deal with 100, the unmet need would have been 400, and then you have to take 25% of that number. We've discussed this in our office a lot, and because it says the prospective need obligation, that has been adjusted, if you adjusted your affordable housing obligation through the realistic development potential down to 100, I think it says you then take 25% of that number. So there's this dispute that we've started in the field, and at some point it will be resolved, but I think that's more realistic, because if you've already proven that you don't have enough vacant land to address your large number, why would you then have to take 25% of that large number when you've already proven that you don't have enough land to deal with it? So that, that's a significant issue that has to be resolved. The regulation at the moment is not yet clear.
Okay. I guess that largely embraces the need for the third question. I guess my, my comment would be, I guess, it should be our focus that we should meet our obligation for round three regardless of what's coming in round four. And then just one final quick question is, is can the same interested party challenge our obligation twice the first time around and the second time around after we've adopted our fair share plan?
I would say yes, under certain circumstances. I know I'm special master in one municipality where a developer has three different sites that he's challenged the municipality on. I'm assuming that's...
Well, yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, that's it for me.
That's it? Okay. Wonderful.
Okay. Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
And thank you again for putting me on early.
Drive home safe. Okay? Thanks. Bye, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we're going to move to public comments. We welcome comments from any member of the public about issues not on tonight's agenda. Whenever an audience member reads from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to the city clerk at citiclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, please speak once and limit your comment to three minutes. Additionally, we need you to state your name and home address. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, please still state your home address along with the address of the group you're representing. Okay?
Council president, respectfully, could I ask for a bathroom break, please?
Sure. Yeah, okay. We'll take five.
Appreciate it.
That's fine. Go ahead. That was our social hour. Okay, do I need to move to public comments yet?
No, I think we've opened the comments.
Okay, we're opening up public comment. Sure, come on up.
Is there a timer, or should I time myself?
We have a timer.
Oh, that's cool. Okay. My name is David Hoffman. I live at One New England Avenue at the Manly Court Apartments. Very manly. I'd like to thank the opportunity to speak to the council, all of you. One quick note, I noticed that we're looking at a resolution for the homeless, and it's a dire problem. And ironically, we're talking about affordable housing. I hope that's approached, not in a demeaning way, but in a way that shows dignity and compassion. I love living in Summit. I adore Summit, and it's a place where people should be able to come and afford to live. Anyway, that being said, now, the firehouse, what to do with the firehouse? The new one is being built, and it is big. It's the biggest firehouse in the area, and we can proudly say that my firehouse is bigger than your firehouse. But what do we do for the people 365 days? We have a beautiful community golf course subsidized with tax dollars, and it's wonderful. We have a town pool. We have schools. We have a gymnasium down by the old Celgene place, all wonderful facilities. But we can do, I think, something magnificent in the center of town here. We can create a recreation center for seniors in the morning, for kids after school, you know, for the kids that run into town and besiege CVS and 7-Eleven. They're not in the clubs. They're not in the bands. They're not doing the plays, but they're looking to congregate and be with each other. And I was thinking a nice recreation center where they could play, where they could meet, eat, and play would be a wonderful thing. That would be after school. And for the evening, for adults, now, what do we do when we really want to meet, eat, and play? We bowl. I'm not sure how many of you remember bowling when you were kids, but it was a wonderful activity, and it's a social activity and something to get people out of their basements, away from their video games. from their video games, and playing with each other. You know, there could be leagues at night for empty nesters, for firemen, for teachers after school. There could be a pro shop where the guy gives lessons and the kids learn how to actually bowl and not drop the ball on the alley. The alley itself could be covered with a hardwood floor. It might be for ballroom dancing. There could be all sorts of things available with imagination, vision. There could be arcade, there could be a game room on the second floor with chess. Imagine a Summit chess club. Anything is possible. We have town property and it's valuable. We don't want to give it away for, dare I say, nail salons and shishi restaurants. I mean, that's cool, but we already have them. Let's have a Summit Recreation Center featuring Firehouse Lanes. And I have six seconds. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you. We're trying to figure out how to keep the...
Light on.
The light on. Give us one second. Just reset it. Okay. All right, please state your name and your home address.
My name is Norman Miller. I'm at 7 Primrose Place in Summit. And I have a different vision, I think, for the, the firehouse. I've been a board member of the Summit Civic Foundation for over 20 years. And I'm currently the board president. The Summit Civic Foundation owns and manages 24 units of affordable housing on Dennis Place and Weaver Street near the high school. For over 60 years, we have offered duplex homes of two and three bedrooms for families working in and around the Summit area. Now, with the high home prices and affordable, unaffordable rents, the need for affordable housing has never been greater. In Summit, it is very difficult for many who work in the city to find affordable housing. It is especially difficult for young families. The proposed 42 units on the firehouse site provides much-needed housing for working families and allows them to enjoy the benefits from all the wonderful things that Summit has to offer, including great schools, recreation facilities, convenience to transportation, and a supportive and welcoming community. Because Summit is largely a built-up community, it is difficult to find location for new housing. The availability of the firehouse site on the corner of Cedar and Broad provides a unique opportunity for the city to create housing not only to fulfill our affordable housing obligations, but as a place for hard-working families to take advantage of all that Summit has to offer. The Summit Affordable Housing Corporation, of which I am a board member, has put together a very attractive proposal for, for the use of this site. While others have shared the details for the proposal, it is important that the city act expeditiously to take advantage of state funding, which will disappear at the end of the year. So I strongly urge the city and the council to act upon the proposal and to continue its long tradition of supporting working families. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Statement, if you had a second. Oh, Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller, can we have your statement? May we? Yeah. Sorry, I don't know how to...
We're going to go back to this one.
Okay. They're not going to be able to see that one, though.
I don't have to send it in?
No.
No, you won't have to send it in. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Give us one second. They won't be able to see that one. Is there a timer on it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, can you put the timer on? This one's going to go off.
This one, it might buzz, but I don't know.
Oh, here we go. I figured it out.
You did?
I'm sorry. Give me one second.
I was hoping that you were still having trouble and that would go in my favor. With the timing.
I just don't know how to reset it. So there you go. I think I fixed it.
Thank you.
Okay, and then let them see it, yeah. All right.
Okay, Janet.
Thanks.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Janet Mulbeck. I live at 40 Russell Place. I've lived in Summit for over 40 years now. I'm the director of Interweave and Interfaith nonprofit founded in Summit, serving the Summit and its surrounding area. As such, I'm proud to be a member of the Summit Interfaith Council. Summit Interfaith Council exists to seek the welfare of the people, of the city. We believe that providing affordable housing is more than a legal obligation. It is a moral obligation. Simply stated, it is the right thing to do. We were very happy last month to hear our mayor, or mayor and our council president make a commitment to affordable housing. And we encourage you to move forward and keep faith with that commitment. Affordable housing makes it possible to, for the people who serve the critical needs of the community to live in the community they serve. And affordable housing makes it possible for people not only to come to Summit to educate and raise their children, but to stay in Summit, to retire here in their later years. Yes, affordable housing is simply the right thing to do. Summit has much to point to, to take pride in, in building affordable housing. But the road to accomplish that has not always been a smooth one. Back in 2009, I was part of efforts to raise funds towards Summit's First Habitat for Humanity Project. It wasn't a given. There was resistance to the idea of affordable housing and fears around affordable housing existed then as they do now. But Summit Interfaith Council and many community-minded nonprofits and civic-minded people came together to make it possible. At Home in Summit is a nonprofit, is a nonpartisan group of community members that is advocating for a plan that has been proposed by the Summit Affordable Housing Corporation. It is a proposal to build an affordable apartment building on the site of the current Summit housing, Summit Firehouse, a four-story, 42-unit building. The plan is fiscally sound. More importantly, it is likely to succeed because it springs out of the commitment from the community to affordable housing and follows the new, the blueprint of collaboration and partnership as we move forward. Clearly, it will help us to stay in good stead. But more importantly, is expression of community.
Janet, your timer's up. Sorry.
Commitment, thank you.
Thank you, Janet. It's not sounding. Sorry, it'll be in the minutes. Excellent. Hold on one. Okay, there we go.
You can just come up.
I think I did it. There you go. Can you just reset it for three minutes?
Yep.
I think I got it. We'll see. Not very techie, but I think we got it.
All right.
Thanks.
This is not about affordable housing. This is actually instead about dangerous traffic conditions in Summit. And ironically, I...
Can you just state your name and your home address?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
My name is Tisha Bender. And I live at 66 Glen Side Avenue in Summit. And I, I actually have a PhD in the ethics of transportation planning, so this is quite ironic, so, what I'm about to say. Okay, so I'm here to speak about dangerous traffic on Glen Side Avenue and its side street, Balters Row Place. And I should know because I live on that corner. I'm aware that Glen Side Avenue is a county road, 527, but it does intersect with the city street of Balters Row Place. So I think there should be a coordinated effort between the city of Summit and Union County to rectify this issue. Let me tell you about some traffic accidents that occurred at this intersection. Last May, the 9th, 2023, a driver merged too fast from Balters Row Place onto Glen Side Avenue, turning left, sideswiped a driver already heading west on that road, swerved, spun across the street, plowing through my fence on Glen Side Avenue, doing a semicircle across my front lawn, and then plowing into my side fence on Balters Row Place, where it became wedged. And then, only 11 months later, last Thursday, April 18th, a driver was heading too fast west on Glen Side Avenue from the center of Summit, turned too wide and fast on Balters Row Place, mounted my front yard, smashed over the stop sign, and plowed into my fence, where it became wedged. I have a police report for both incidents. And these are not the only two incidents. About three weeks ago, there was a three-car accident on Glen Side Avenue, heading west, from which two of the cars were write-off and the airbags deployed on all cars. And additionally, last December, at about 1:00 AM, a car was traveling too fast up Balters Row Place towards Glen Side Avenue, bumped into a parked car so severely that it flipped the parked car onto its roof. And several years ago, the pole supporting the power lines at this intersection of Glen Side Avenue and Balters Row Place fell down as it had been bashed by an 18-wheeler truck coming up Balters Row Place and trying to turn the corner onto Glen Side Avenue. And the whole area was without power while the pole was being erected, a new pole was erected. Now, that so-called new pole already has a crack all the way up it from being bashed by other trucks. And a tree that had been across at the opposite corner, 25 Balters Row Place, was hit so frequently by these 18-wheeler trucks, unable to turn easily from Balters Row Place to Glen Side Avenue, that it was, the tree was dangerously leaning towards my house and had to be chopped down. And a few other concerning factors. I'm concerned about the safety of my yard, and I think my grandchildren should not play in it for fear of being hurt by any vehicles. And I have...
Timer's up, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We will take your statement, absolutely.
I wish you would.
We'll make sure that, yeah, that safety...
It'll be in its entirety in the minutes.
Oh, good.
And you'll, you'll hear back from us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I do have a neighbor who wanted to talk about the same issues, so...
Sure. She'll raise her hand, she'll be recognized.
Oh, is I supposed to raise my hand? Sorry, I didn't raise my hand. Is that the new rule? Is it okay from up here?
It's okay.
Okay, great. Hi, Amy DeCibio, 1 Essex Road. First of all, thanks for the big cleanup day. I think that's awesome that that, that that happened in town. I think the amount of trash is alarming. This is something that I've talked to, you know, many people over the last few councils about. And I'm just wondering if perhaps there's a possibility of an ordinance that would limit the businesses downtown from putting trash at the curb every single day? And perhaps an ordinance that requires a dumpster behind buildings? Because Springfield Avenue and Summit Avenue are, you guys all know, they're wind tunnels. And if it's a windy day, no matter how much someone packages their garbage or their recycling, it, it blows all over the place. I'm always picking up stuff when I walk through town. I live not far from town. I can get to town and fill a garbage bag. I do that frequently. So I just think maybe it's something that we could take a deeper dive on. It's just not really working the way it is. And it's great that we have a cleanup day, but once a year isn't enough. And I don't feel that on a regular basis, we're really maintaining tree wells and curbs and sidewalks. It's just all over downtown. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Council President, I would just request if Miss DeCibio would kindly put that in writing and send it to us.
Yep.
By email.
And then I'll refer it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Jackson, 28 Morris Avenue. I've been in contact with Anita Musica about this Bryant Parkway situation. I understand that she's written to some council. But I wanted to comment on what Councilman Vartan said. He said that the three reasons that Bryant Parkway was made one way was speed, volume, and safety. And I certainly think if we were to make streets one way based upon speed, you would just have chaos. As far as volume, that can be important, but I see it as people, some people saying, there's a lot of volume on my street, you know, give it to somebody else. That's not really fair. And then there's the issue of safety. And I think if, I had given some examples, the last meeting of traffic safety necessities in the area. And I would just ask, why would it have taken seven years to get to this point if there really was a traffic safety necessity? And for the, the streets that are getting the load now, you know, the Morris Avenue, Broad Street, Orchard Street, all the intersecting streets, do they not care about volume? Do they not care about safety? Do they not care about speed? They absolutely do. And the, this, this traffic, which is now being diverted, is causing hardship. And, and the city of Summit knew it. How do I know that they knew it? Well, you wouldn't be looking at the traffic light at Morris and Orchard if you didn't realize that what you're doing is just shifting a lot of traffic west. And Councilman Vartan mentioned that there was over 3,000 cars that were on Bryant Parkway. That's why we had to do it. Well, where does the, let's just say that the one-way cuts that in half and you have 1,500 cars. Where do they go? You know, you have 1,500 cars that are then going to other major streets that are very busy and residential. That's not right. What, how do I also know that the city of Summit knew what it was doing? There was a very, very clear map in the August 16th, 2023 Tap into. And I would recommend everybody just look in that, where it shows that the one-way is going to shift a lot of traffic onto, it says, it says, there's a caption, diverted traffic, right on Morris, where I live. I live right, right around the corner from Anita Musica. And then onto Orchard. August, that map was repeated in the October 5th Summit Tap into. Please take a look at that, August 16th. This was prior to the trial. And of course, when the trial occurred, Anita stated what was happening. And then she restated, but the council said, no, we'll do something, we'll, we'll do a secondary study. But she's telling you what's happening during the trial. And then she comes to the April 2nd meeting saying that, that, that traffic is massive on her street. Relentless, I think, was her word. So please reconsider.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. I'm the Reverend Julie Yarborough at Christ Church in Summit, 561 Springfield Avenue. I would also like to speak in support of the Affordable Housing Plan put forth by the Affordable Housing Corporation and supported by the members of Summit, the At Home in Summit Group that has sprung up in, in support of this plan. It's, as you know, to build 42 units at the site of the Firehouse and 7 Cedar Street. And there's a time pressure to, if you're, if you're planning to go with this plan, if you're planning to adopt this plan or to look at it seriously, there is a time pressure to adopt it so that, as soon as possible, so that the money that is available can be used. If the money isn't used by the end of this year, it reverts back to the federal government. So I encourage you to seriously consider adopting that plan. And I think it'll make significant progress toward fulfilling the state mandate. And it's also the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have your statement?
I just have notes. I can pipe something up if you want.
Okay.
Good evening. Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street, NLSON. Little over a year ago, there was a heated discussion at this council chamber here about the COC, Continuation of Care, I forget exactly what it stands for. But it's been a year. And I'm wondering if there's been any minutes, meeting attendance, progress, anything that's benefited Summit since we had that heated conversation about 52, 53 weeks ago? And I'm just curious, through you, Council President, I believe Councilmember Vartan and Councilmember Miniger were key in that. So if they could answer those questions, are there any minutes, progress, anything that's benefited us since we've joined that, or have we joined that organization? I'm curious.
Oh, yeah. Finish your statement and then we'll close public comment. We can answer some of the questions.
That's my statement.
Okay. Well, that's it? Okay.
Pretty quick. Thank you.
Oh, sure. Thank you. So the question, Mr. Nelson, is, did we join the COC?
Yeah.
And what's the update? Is that right? Okay.
I know there's been at least two meetings this year. I'm not sure when we joined last year. I'm sure there were meetings. I know they meet like every other month or something like that. So I'm just curious, what's going on?
Okay. Thank you. Sure. Yeah, come on up.
Ariel Williams, 68 Glen Side. So it's late and we are family, so I won't harp on what's already been said, but I do echo the comments about trash. And I do want to also just echo my neighbor's comments about traffic and traffic safety on Glen Side Ave. Glen Side Ave, it's a county road. It's, it's truly, as, as a resident, it feels as though it's become a highway. It, it is not an exaggeration to say that people drive upwards of 60 on that road. I have a two-year-old. My neighbor has several grandchildren. You cannot be outside and feel safe. And that is wild to feel that way in Summit, a small, tight-knit community. I have video footage of all of the accidents, which my, my neighbor... I have video footage of all of the accidents, which my, my neighbor has spoken about today. They are frightening. It is not an exaggeration, again, to say, it is, it's, it's very possible that the next time someone drives into her front lawn, they could hit her house and hit her in it. And it's not an exaggeration to say that me being next door, it could happen to me. It could happen to my cars, it could happen outside when I'm with my daughter. So anything that we can do as a community, I don't want to harp on the problem, but I want to help to find solutions, anything that we can do, working together, to find whatever we can do, a traffic survey, which was done similar to Bryant Park, anything to, again, find solutions to make this road safer for our community. It's become, you know, a bridge between 78 and 22, and it's really not a road that's frequented by locals anymore. It's, it's become a, a pass-through. And so, again, just want to bring light to that and the safety. I mean, there are traffic incidents that are happening. People could die, and that is truly the next step. So just wanted to echo the comments and, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm Diego Huig, Argal Court, and I have some concerns about the budget, and I want to ask you to consider them before voting on them and setting them over the next two weeks. On the revenue side, number one, why increase the municipal tax levy by 5% or $1.5 million instead of using the general fund to save to the same extent as last year? Last year, the city used 80% of the balance. This year, the starting general fund balance increased 16% versus last year to a record $11.7 million, but yet, the plan is to use only 70% of it. The unused portion of the fund increases 73%, precisely the $1.5 million increase in the municipal tax levy. Why squirrel away a record $3.5 million as unrestricted cash? Many in the past have asked, why should any government hoard taxpayer dollars instead of letting citizens do the saving? I posed the same question. Along the same lines, why reserve $5 million for uncollected tax when over the last five years, uncollected tax never exceeded $524,000? On the expense and liability side, an analogy. Most parents, when they take their kids to the candy store, they only give them $5 rather than $100. So why double the capital budget in 2024? And at $10.5 million, the 2025 capital budget is five times the 2023 capital budget. Doesn't spending $12 million in paving roads or $6 million in one field sound a bit like giving a kid $100 at a candy store? Number three, what's the plan to protect our valued AAA rating if this council okays the debt required to pay for the capital budget as proposed? Moody's last year criticized our 388% debt-to-revenue ratio as borderline too high. So what are the tax increases required to protect this ratio when facing an approximately 20% increase to our total debt over the next few years? Number four, why not contain the 4.2% increase in municipal service costs? After all, general government is up 15.3%, community programs plus 5.1%, community services plus 4.6%, not to mention the 46% increase in deferred charges and reserves. I'm not sure I fully understand or agree with the rationale for reducing sewer capital spending over the next five years. And finally, the number of pensionable employees increases by 2.8%, and all else equal, doesn't this create a 2.8% increase to our pension obligation? In summary, the numbers say that the Summit residents are being asked to pay higher taxes and increase reserves to fund what appears to be runaway spending, not what I would call fiscal prudence. Thank you.
Did you send in your questions also through email? We'll take that. I was just, just, okay.
I made my statement here.
Okay. Great. Anybody else? Yeah, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Carlos Hernandez from 85 Butler Parkway. I'm here to urge the common council to hit the reset button on the Tatlock Fields Lights Installation Project proposal. Removing it from the 2024 budget is not even taking a temporary pause on the proposal. By now, the common council is fully informed regarding the strong concern and mounting resident opposition to this proposal. You also are well aware that of the troubled history attempts to install lights at Tatlock, including unmet promises, broken agreements, and unkept compromises your predecessors made to the Tatlock community. Unfortunately, the current project proposal is rooted on a non-transparent climate illustrated by the lack of the following two critical pillars. Number one, collective decision-making. Decision to recommend the project were of a few citizens without the necessary diversity of thought. That is, there was no upfront participation whatsoever from Tatlock residents. Number two, accountability. The common council specifically did not demand or expect a solid, credible analysis of field usage at existing Summit sports facilities, public or in private, that demonstrated a clear need to light any field, not just Tatlock. Even with the common council's recent openness to increase community engagement forging ahead with the proposal, project is wholly unsound. Why? Because he lacks the necessary underpinnings to benefit from some, from some form of credibility among the vast majority of the most adversely affected residents of the Tatlock community. The common council is now at a pivotal moment, facing kind of like a fork on the road, so to speak. Which way are you going to proceed? The right way would be one where the common council lives up to recent statements, a recent printed message by Mayor Elizabeth Fagan titled, "Feedback from Residents Provides a Cornerstone," which specifically refers to the community's expectation for transparency, accountability, and collective decision-making. In order to live up to that spirit, the common council should set up a committee with diversity of thought membership, and also demand proper transparency and accountability in ensuring before such committee brings forward a recommendation to the common council that it first shows the existing sports facilities throughout the city are being optimally utilized. The wrong way to proceed is the current path, that is, to continue to pushing forward on this tainted project proposal, and therefore, it is destined to continue facing universal opposition from the Tatlock's most affected, most affected residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Thank you.
Henry Vasman, 18 Hartley Road. Lights at Tatlock. On October 2nd, 2018, Elaine Anderson, then-presiding officer of the Summit Department of Community Programs Board, told common council, quote, "Field space shortage was identified in the 2006 Field Master Plan, and there is a shortage of space or fields are not available." But no facts were given to support her claims. In March 2024, Mark Ozerowski said, quote, "We always have had problems with field allocation. Sports continue to grow and overlap. We don't have the fields to accommodate all the activities." Again, no facts were provided. In both presentations, a slide showed 20 recommendations to increase field availability. Of the 20, most, seven of them affect Tatlock Park. Only two recommendations would affect Memorial Field, which is the only other large field the city owns, and one of them is to erect lights. Why wasn't that on the 2024 proposal? In 2018, Ms. Anderson said, "Each recommendation was evaluated for estimated cost, impact to neighborhood, implementation effort, impact to the field situation, and overall possibility and probability." Have anybody, have any of you seen a report of that evaluation? I haven't. After the 2018 presentation, Councilmember Mike McTiernan asked, "Has the board done any initial community outreach around some interest from a different neighborhoods?" The interest would be lights on some of the fields. Ms. Anderson responded, "We have not done community outreach on them. We've worked with the sports presidents who represent the communities around the fields." So the only people consulted on the impact of recommendations were people with a vested interest in implementing them. A 2018 recommendation was to modernize the Anderson Field House. Mr. Ozerowski reported that the update of the Anderson Field House would go to bid zone. Has anyone shared the design with common council, with the people of Summit, or even with the Tatlock neighborhood? The Tatlock Lights Project should not go forward until we have fact-based information rather than claims without substantiation by groups that would benefit from the changes. This project should be halted until a full four-season audit of all field usage is made, and I say usage, not what the sports clubs request. You are responsible for judiciously spending taxpayer money. You have an obligation to learn the facts before allocating city funds.
Thank you. Thank you, Henry.
Incidentally, I don't know of that modern technology. I use my old stopwatch to-
Stopwatches are free, aren't they?
Much more, much easier to use.
Yes. You're right. You're right.
Miles Calmington, 67 Butler Parkway. So I'm also here to talk about lights. I attended one of the small community meetings a few weeks ago, and in that meeting, Councilman Smallwood, Mark Ozerowski, and David Guida discussed their intentions for the stadium light usage. And they said two points. One, stadium lights are meant to extend the daylight hours for organized sports. And two, the current high school football coach likes weekend games, so there won't be an increase in night games. So I'm here to say that those statements can be trusted. First of all, Mr. Ozerowski walked back the first statement 30 minutes into the meeting. A neighbor said that it would be great to have lights so her son would have somewhere to play pickup games with his friends at night. So I asked Mr. Ozerowski about it. I said, I asked if the stadium lighting would be able to be used for residents for non-organized sports, and he said yes. And then Mr. Guida, like, shut him up real quick and, and added that nothing is decided yet, and that scheduling is part of the conversation, and it's still all a possibility. So I agree with Mr. Guida, and rather than speculate on what might happen, I'd prefer to look on what has happened. If, I've looked around at other towns, and I've yet to find any examples where a town has stadium lights and is not running them constantly, regardless of the promises they made to neighbors. New Providence, for example, promised the neighbors that the lights would go off by 9:00, and now that's been pushed back to 10:00. They also hold every home football game at night. In Mendham Township, where the director of Parks and Rec happens to be Summit's assistant director, the old football coach didn't care for night games. Well, that coach retired, and the new coach likes night games. So now all the games are at night in Mendham Township as well. And even last week, I was, the guy working with my lawn sprinklers saw the sign in my yard, and he was like, "Yeah, you don't want that. I live in Denville, and those lights run all the time." So I actually looked it up, and, and the truth is, Morris Catholic in Denville holds every home game on Thursday or Friday nights. Even Summit hasn't kept its promises. The Tatlock tennis court lights were supposed to go off by 9:00 originally, but I regularly see them on till 10:30 when I go to bed. Every town I've looked at with stadium lights has them running constantly and has their home football games at night. That includes Mendham, New Providence, Milburn, and yes, Morris Catholic, where my sprinkler guy lives. Now, I, now do I think Councilmen Smallwood, Mr. Ozerowski, and Mr. Guida are intentionally trying to deceive us? No, I actually believe their intentions are good. I chatted with them a little bit after the, after the, the meeting, and I, I think they're trying to do the right thing for the town. But I, I think they actually think that Summit will be different and that we can actually do this without disrupting the neighbors. But, but I do think they're being a little optimistic here. I'm about to run out of time, so I'm just going to finish up by saying, I just want to remind you all that while your positions here are temporary, your decisions are not. Choices you make today can have lasting effects for decades-
Thank you, Mr. Calmington.
...on the character of our town and the quality of the lives of the neighbors.
I have your seat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm waiting for the time to set, but I'll be short. My name is Eric Solberg. I'm a, been a member, I've been a resident Summit at 46 Laurel for the past 30 years, raised my kids here, all went through the public schools here, and I love Summit. I, I've been coming to council meetings for the past couple months to know about the Affordable Housing, which is very near and dear to my heart. I'm part of the At Home at Summit group, and I've been waiting, and I thought I'd hear it today, what is the status of the Mount Laurel Committee's recommendation? What, what plan is being done? I think it's being done in, behind closed doors, and I just want, like, I would like to know what's happening, and I think the public wants to know what's going on. And so I'm asking for a timetable of when we will know more about what the recommendation is from the Mount Laurel Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Calmington, 67 Butler Parkway. In looking through the stadium light proposal, I saw measurements for spill light, but it doesn't specifically address glare. Glare is defined as excessive brightness occurring in the normal field of view, and its impact is related to the contrast of the light source in the background. As an example, think about when you're on a dark street and you look at a passing car's headlights, and then look back to the dark road. Even though the lights not, might not be pointed at you, which would be spill light, your eyes have to take a second or two to adjust back to dark road. According to a study by Fairfax County Park Authority in Virginia, glare can be a serious safety hazard, for example, for drivers and pedestrians, in that it demands attention since one's eyes are naturally attracted to bright light, and at night, this destroys the eye's dark adaptation. Glare and excessive illumination when cast into surrounding residential neighborhoods not only detract from the quality of life, but can make it difficult for pedestrians and homeowners to see their surroundings. Butler Parkway is dark. Our streetlights are dim. You literally can't see someone across the street from you. We're not even allowed to run electricity to light poles on our property in order to keep things dark. If stadium lights are put in, the contrast of the lights with the dark street, combined with the reduced visibility due to parked cars and increased traffic, is going to cause a huge safety problem for people walking dogs or walking to Magic Fountain. To make it worse, as Miles just said, it's pretty likely that night games are going to increase over time, like they've done in every other town with stadium lighting. We also just saw the chaos that happens with larger events at Tatlock a few weeks ago during the track relay event. And on top of the usual chaos, night games bring another problem to the mix, drinking. I won't ask for a show of hands, but I'm sure many of us in this room have had a drink or two at Friday night lights. So now we have the perfect storm. We have a dark street with glare from stadium lights, causing people to not be able to see their surroundings. We have traffic and parked cars that reduce visibility and prevent emergency vehicles from getting through. We have a large number of cars and pedestrians on a couple of streets that are not meant to handle it, and many of those pedestrians and drivers have been drinking. If stadium lighting is installed, how does DCP and council plan on ensuring the safety of community members? Many of you up here ran on a platform of safety. Those of us who live close to Tatlock have warned you that this is a dangerous situation. Are DCP and council prepared for the lawsuits you'll be faced with when a child gets hit or someone dies because emergency vehicles couldn't get through in time? Thank you.
No? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is David Helmath. I live at 211 Kent Place Boulevard. I have two unrelated matters that I'd like to bring to the attention of the mayor and the council. I'll keep all of my remarks underneath three minutes. The first remarks I have are related to the police department's drone program. All of my remarks assume arguendo that all of the benefits of the drone program, as explained in the news articles I've read and the other public hearings and statements I've read and, and watched, are true. Fundamentally, my wife couldn't be here because she, she's watching our two small children, but fundamentally, we are fundamentally opposed on philosophical grounds to the existence and presence of the drone in town. Our founding fathers would be aghast at the creeping nature of the surveillance state that we live under, and I think this is just a step too far. My property abuts woods. Admittedly, I do not always close my shades in the back of my house, and I don't want to have to. I think there's an old trope that reads that people who are law-abiding don't have anything to fear from police surveillance. I think it's fundamentally false. So I just wanted to make the council aware, there are, there are at least two voters in the town that are just simply opposed to this program, and at minimum, that it should not be expanded at this point. The other remark I have relates to Tatlock, but not about the lighting. My five-year-old loves the Tatlock Park. Some of my neighbors seem to be under the false impression that their dogs are people, and I would ask that signage around that playground for little children be improved to remind my neighbors that their dogs, even on a leash, are not allowed on the playground, and that the grass field behind Washington, Washington School is not an off-leash dog run. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else before we close? Okay. I'm going to close the public comment period. One thing I'm going to say, there's a lot of questions here tonight, and rather than pick and choose which ones we answer, I think we need to direct the questions to the appropriate committees. Um- Right? At this point, 'cause I don't think we're gonna be able to get to everything. So, we will make sure to get back, the questions I heard were the COC, and we'll go through the list, but the financial question, COC, At Home for Summit, and the Tatlock lights in terms of the committees, the listening session. So, we're gonna have to get back to everybody through email, okay? Rather than having a full dialogue.
May I respond to the COC one real quick?
Sure.
Is that okay? Just a quick for Mr. Nelson. I actually had this written up beforehand, so it worked out nicely. So, please note that the membership in the COC, which stands for the Continuum of Care, membership of the COC includes organizations here in Summit that work directly with our unhoused population, including the members of Summit, Warm Hearts, Grace, Bridges Outreach, Family Promise. These nonprofits stay up to date with, on resources available to them, related legislation making its way through governing bodies, and hearing the good and bad from different organizations around the county. In March, we received updates from Bridgeway Services, an organization that provides services to unhoused folks in Union County, including urgent care services, supportive housing, and outreach and diversion services. They work with local police and community providers to identify people who need these services and care, primarily with mental health needs. Members of the COC also provided updates to the group on cash assistance availability, housing assistance availability, food pantry vouchers, utility assistance, mortgage payment assistance, rental or security deposit assistance. Earlier this year, this group provided updates to the, on the point of, point-in-time count, which is an annual count they do around the county of unhoused individuals. Summit had twenty-three as of that count. Also, earlier this year, a draft of the updated countywide standardized intake process was completed, a draft. That's still in progress. They, that will, when that's completed, it will help organizations like Bridges Outreach participate in a standardized intake process across the county, making sure that people who have no home have their history known and their conditions known, no matter where they reach out to initially for help. It saves resources having a consistent system of record like that. Blue, so on, on days when it's cold or days when it's too hot, there's those alerts, we were notified of those things, the results of them, and these, these organizations can discuss problems they, they had with that. They definitely talk about lack of funding for these, these types of things as well. And finally, there was an update, and there always is, that New Jersey has a lack of affordable housing, which they mention every time. Two-hundred thousand units plus are needed in the state. That contributes to some of the issues we continue to see in this region. People who are unable to remain in their homes, including some folks in Summit, are affected by this. There is a connection between a lack of affordable housing across the country and housing vulnerability, and, yes, even homelessness. That's just, that's one update from two of their meetings. It's typically a discussion among organizations and how organizations can help others funding wise. That's the main thing.
Councilman Hamlet.
Yes, thanks for that update, Councilman Miniger. You mentioned that there's a, I missed the second one, but there's a county standard. Is that, is that in regards to case management? They're working on a new standardization?
Form, format.
Standardization form. So, I guess my question is, when we joined the COC, one of the reasons we joined the COC was that, through you, Council President, like Chief Segorsky, to potentially answer this, one of the reasons that we joined the COC was that so our police force could have access to the homeless management information system. I know that was something that we talked a lot about because we didn't have that. Is that something that we have achieved in the first year, Chief? No. Would you mind maybe? I'm sorry? Would you mind just speaking to the microphone? I'm sorry. I was just-
I said, no, that's all.
Okay, so we don't, so, Andy, I think a takeaway for me and something that was really important and was that in order for us to solve and improve homelessness, we have to have these individuals seek case management and monitor how they are, how they're moving through the program. And without our police force having access to the homeless management information system, it hinders our ability to help them actively seek case management. You know, I know most of the homeless individuals in Summit, and I think the most frustrating part, as great as all the nonprofits are in helping them, is, is really truly, I had some conversations with some EMS members today, really following their case management, seeing how they work through the progress. So, Andy, if you could help us with that and see if we could make some progress, I think that would be great.
I think one of the most important parts of this is that Bridges has operated as, Bridges Outreach has operated as a, one of the main intakes. They do have access to the HMIS system. And I think the CEO's not here, but he talked about the police, when they do, when they're the initial line of, of intake, do you reach out to Bridges? Do you reach out to organizations that are, that are the, that can have, that have access to HIMIS?
Okay. Councilman Marten, did you have any?
No, I was just gonna say, I, I don't wanna put the chief on the spot. I don't think the police are meant to be professional case management for the homeless population, right? I think all the organizations in Summit that, that are doing that professionally certainly have access to that system, and that's, that's the important thing. I don't, I don't think that we would wanna put the police in our position of becoming case management. That's not at all what we would want.
I'm certainly not recommending that. I'm saying one of the reasons why we were told or encouraged to join the COC was for that. I have, I am agnostic to whether or not they should have the homeless management information system. If it helps, great. You're the professional, you're our chief, you tell us, but that was something that was really, we were all COC for the HMIS.
That was one of, I, I don't even recall that being part of the initial conversation. I think many of the other organizations, the nonprofit organizations in Summit, having access to that system was the most important thing.
We can go back to the tapes. I'll forward you the transcripts.
So, I would just like to say that there is a resolution on the agenda this evening that will help us hopefully address some of the conversation we're having, so, and I'm hoping that my colleagues up here will support this, and we can move forward, and you use what Andy has found from his meetings with the COC to move forward and really be productive around this topic.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman.
I just have a couple of comments about garbage and some things that I heard.
Okay.
I think garbage in the street is a problem. I live on Morris Avenue. You know, we could've did Earth Day for two weeks on Morris Avenue. One of the issues is, and I talked to our engineer, Mr. Schrager, about this, is the pulling of the garbage out on the curb. We're actually not supposed to do that. The garbage man is supposed to come in the backyard and dump the garbage and then take it out. I mean, I think that's half the problem. If you look at Morris Avenue, Springfield Avenue, the garbage cans are out there all day. They're blowing in the street, you know, they have, there's, you know, incremental pieces of trash everywhere, and, you know, really litters our neighborhood. So, Engineer Schrager, I think we're working to improve this to where we can have the DCP actually comply with the law, right? If you wanna talk about that. I don't, I don't think most people know that there's a law that you can't, you know, bring your garbage out to the curb.
Yes, through you, Council President. So, in the next few meetings, the Department of Community Services will be bringing forth a new solid waste ordinance, which is essentially trash and garbage. As part of that, we'll roll out a public campaign for what you should and shouldn't do with, with your waste, but also a big part of that will be focusing on the downtown, where there's some challenges that the ordinance prohibits what people can do, but there might not be infrastructure for what we might want them to do, and just how we could work with that. So, we're still working with SDI internally to just have a process in place, so when we do roll out the ordinance, we can enforce everything that's in it. And like I said, we'll do a public campaign for also reminding that, you know, in, in Summit, the rule is, is rear yard pickup, so.
And that, that also includes residential houses, right?
Yes, that, that's primarily for residential houses, so yes.
So, the other thing, I'm really concerned about what I'm hearing on Glenside Avenue and Balter Straw. I looked at the, on Google Maps, and I'm trying to figure out what, your, your, your gate is different colors. I guess that's because cars have run into it. Is that?
So, my, my gate is different colors?
Yeah, the fence, yeah.
How long of it is missing?
I'm sorry, okay. So, what I, what I asked you to do, and I, I apologize, I'm a new councilman up here, I get excited, try to fix things. If you can get in touch with me so that we can address this at the Safety Committee and figure out what the issues are, all right? I know that Glenside Avenue, people do speed, I mean. The other thing is Orchard Street. We talked about that in our Safety Committee, Safety Committee meeting as well, and to do some type of traffic study and see what we could do in regard to that one way. And last but not least, sorry, I have one more here. Last but not least, the drones. Yeah, listen, I, I completely understand the privacy concerns. You know, fortunately, our, our police department documents heavily when that drone is in the air, everything's recorded, and that drone really, literally saves lives. Speeding cars that they're chasing every other night, you know, looking for people that are in the bushes, you know, with the thermal imaging, so there is a significant trade-off, but I think privacy is, is key, and I think they're all recorded. So, what we can do is, you know, have conversations with the police, make sure that people are monitoring that the drone is being used for appropriate reasons.
So, Council President?
Thank you, Council President.
I, I have three quick things. First is a couple of other, so, topics that were missed were the downtown trash, Glenside Park, Glenside Avenue traffic, Bryant Parkway, drones, right? But, second is, for consistency's sake, moving forward, we should just try to set an expectation of what the response from us is gonna be, right? And, three, if we're not gonna answer the questions and comments that people have, we should, and say we're gonna get back to them via email, then we should ask them for their email, right? Otherwise, we're gonna have to be chasing people around, and we're not gonna be sure how, you know, we, we need to, we need to figure this out.
Okay. Well, Mr. Hoic had fifteen questions, so I don't-
Yeah.
-know if I can, that's what my-
But we didn't ask him for his email.
Respectfully, 'cause he had good questions. I'm just saying that we can't answer every individual question.
That's perfectly reasonable, but we, we gotta ask him for his email, right? We gotta, we gotta, and everybody else, too, has things that we need to respond to.
So, you, you asked him after the meeting. You go up to him and say, "Hey, what's your email? What's your contact information?" And he's being-
Yeah, there's the possibility some people could leave, though, if we wanna just make sure we're, you know, responding appropriately, I think that's reasonable.
I've never had a problem getting in touch with folks. We'll, we'll be in touch.
And if you'd like to send an email, it's cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. And all of our emails, what you should do is send us an email. It's our first initial and last name. So, J. Boyer, G. Vartan, L. Allen, what's that?
At cityofsummit.org.
At cityofsummit.org. So, that's how you would get to us.
Don't copy all of you.
Yeah. What's that?
Don't copy more than three council people.
Oh, and only three council people can be on an email at once, so, but-
Lots of rules.
I don't know if you say ladies or ma'am. Ladies. So, it's okay, no, for Glenside and Balter Straw, if you could actually send us an email, 'cause we're gonna, we'll do an official DAR.
I already sent a, a copy.
Okay.
To the county clerk, is that what you're asking, or anything additional? We'll wait after, what would be our information?
Yep. Every time? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I, you know, I'm really responsive, and so is Council President on Facebook, we're really active. So, I'm just, Councilman Boyer, word to, really easy to put in, so, get a message from me, that's cool.
I don't know about Facebook, maybe, maybe email for me.
We also welcome you to come by, so you can see.
Yeah.
I can do that, too.
Yeah, we like to go take field trips, for sure. Yes, so, and most of the individuals in this room, we, we know. In terms of the Summit at Home, we know who to get ahold of. Go ahead, Councilman Plasky.
Yeah, I just wanna say that, you know, sure, we could take emails. I think we say repeatedly during these meetings, if you have a statement or any questions, hand them to the, to the clerk or email them. And finally, everyone on this day has, has many emails from Diego Hoic, so we won't have to look too far.
And I meant that respectfully. The questions are great, so, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes, just a quick comment regarding the trash. I sent an email to, regarding the downtown business trash, I sent an email to Nancy Adams on January twenty-nine. And I know I've been speaking with Director Schrager a lot about this, but I, I've reviewed the ordinances on trash, and I asked her, "How are the businesses being notified that they are in violation of a specific ordinance through SDI or Summit Downtown? It seems fairly straightforward, but perhaps they don't know what the rules are. Do we have some sort of welcome packet within SDI to notify the businesses?" And through you, Council President, Director Schrager, I think that the DRO specifically states that trash has to be in containers, and how do we enforce? I mean, there's literally people putting trash bags on sidewalks in Summit Downtown every day, and I think that the frustration is we're just not making progress towards solving a, what seemed to be a very simple problem.
Yes, through you, Council President, the trash does need to be containerized, and, and many people do follow the rules, but a lot of the bags you do see downtown, where we've actually had staff members go through them, it's not coming from downtown. So, it's easy to say, if, in front of, say, five-twelve Springfield, that you could summon and find them, but we're finding it's coming from the peripherals of town. So, it is people going to the train and just leaving town that do drop it. So, it's a little bit trickier, but it is something we're looking into and we're trying to chase through our solid waste foreman, but it is, a lot of those bags you see are actually being dropped.
I mean, I will say, Dr. Schrager, I, I'm sure you're right in some instances, but I literally see the business owners, I mean, and I speak to the business owners, they take the trash bags from their business and they just put them, and I'm sure that you're, you're right, but I, there's a lot of business, I think all they just need is a garbage can, and they take the garbage can, I don't know, hopefully people don't steal them, maybe they can, I don't know, tie the garbage cans to the brick or let, I don't know.
And for some of it is the actual storage of it, so that's where we have to, we do have outreach, and we've been working with some of them, but it's just some, some places don't even have Area Four container, or they don't have alley access, so it is, it is tricky, but we're, we're trying to find something that appeases all. We've done some experimental, like, evening pickups, so, but that might result in some fees, and then you don't wanna induce demand, so it's, it's tricky, but we, we'll roll something out this year.
I, I mean, this has been an ongoing conversation for a couple of years, to the point where DPW has had to go through trash bags to find out who they belong to, so figuring out the right solution has taken some time, but I know that we're getting there.
Through you, Council President, do we, do we have an ordinance, a no-dumping ordinance? And maybe that's a question for Law &amp; Labor, we could, if, if that is happening, maybe, you know, Bob, Council Plasky, maybe you and I can talk about this and maybe put up some signs and start finding folks, right?
Yeah, that should be included if there is an ordinance for, you were saying the, what ordinance are you working on?
Well, ours is the Solid Waste, which is just the processing of trash in general for the city, but in terms of littering, I don't know off the top of my head where it is, it might be in the police code, but it does exist, so we do have littering ordinances and dumping ordinance.
Could, okay.
Right now.
Okay.
And that's no dumping, not littering, right?
Right. That's a difference, exactly. That's what I was gonna say, can you put dumping into that ordinance, or is it separate?
Well, we'll have to check. It sounds like Solicitor Jacoby is looking that up, but, yeah, I forgot how they fall, 'cause there, there's police ones, there's also the DCS ones, so, two parts of the ordinance, so.
Okay. And I will say that people bring down their trash cans because they wanna be helpful, guilty, so, good to know that you, you're not supposed to do that. Anyway, are we?
So, under the police code, litter prevention regulations.
Okay. Meaning, it's under the litter provisions that you cannot dump?
Yeah, you can't, I mean, you can't, it, it covers everything.
Everything, okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
Laundry, drag, it's pretty, it's pretty broad. You can look at it, but it's under the police, so people can get summons as well.
You get a summons, that's what, that's gonna be my question. Okay.
So, we'll talk about it in Health and Safety.
Excellent, okay, and CAP as well. Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay. All right, okay. Excellent. All right, we're gonna move on to res, just a final statement. Send your questions to cityclerk@cityofsummit.org, okay? Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to resolutions. The first one is Finance, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number one-one-one-nine-nine, and this resolution authorizes the concurrence the concurrence of the 2024, excuse me, with the 2024 Board of Educa, Board of School Estimates Certification of Required Funds. The Board of Education budget makes up approximately 50% of property tax levy in Summit, and this certification of funds required is for $72,182,608. I move to adopt this resolution.
Great, Council com, sorry, Council comments?
No, second, please. Who's second? Second. Thank you, yeah.
Council comments? Public comments? All right, roll call, please.
Not necessary, but I'll be happy to. Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Plasky?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Motion carries, thank you, Rosemary. Okay, um, Councilman Boyer, for Safety and Health.
Thank you, Council President, this is Resolution ID number 11203, authorizing submission of the New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety, State and Community Highway Safety Grant Application and Execute Grant Agreement. Uh, the grant program offers federal funding to enhance pedestrian safety, covering initiatives such as impaired driving, control, increased seatbelt, and child restraint use, traffic law enforcement focusing on speed, aggressive, uh, destructive driving, and safety improvements for various road users, including bicyclists and pedestrians. Uh, the police department plans to request $15,000. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Council comments? Public comments?
Us, too.
Thank you, Council President, this is, uh, Resolution ID number 11198, authorizing the appointment of two new police officers. I have a quick question, since this was, I, I wasn't in closed session, can I, uh, talk about the police officers?
Yes.
Thanks. Police Officer Earl Lindo, uh, will be starting on May 8th, 2024. Earl is a one-year veteran of the East Orange Police Department, and Eduardo Ortiz, uh, starting May 8th, 2024. Eduardo is a four-year veteran of the Urbiton Police Department. Uh, I wish both of these, uh, two gentlemen, a safe and, um, and good career in this beautiful community, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Council comments? Public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, Law and Labor, Councilman Plasky.
Thank you, Council President, uh, this is Resolution ID number 11201. There, um, there have been some changes to this since we posted it in the packet, and uh, we've socialized them with council members generally, but in order to, uh, put this resolution forward, I'm gonna read, um, what some of the changes are. The first, uh, whereas clause, we've removed the word exponentially. The second whereas clause, we've revised to read as follows. Whereas the homeless population, whereas, as the homeless population increases, more individuals are left residing and sleeping in public spaces. We've then added, uh, a third, uh, whereas clause that says, whereas this situation presents challenges to the health and safety of the homeless, and also impacts the broader community, underscoring the need for compassionate and effective solutions. Then we've also added a whereas clause that states, whereas the city aspires to minimize and/or end homelessness in Summit. The City of Summit continues to experience challenges associated with homelessness. A way to identify and pursue solutions and, uh, reasonable actions the city can take to address this complex problem is to work with the state, county, and local resources committed to assist the homeless. Mayor Fagan has requested a task force to do just that. I move to adopt this resolution establishing the mayor's task force on homelessness in Summit.
I second.
Great, thank you. Council comments? I'm actually, okay, go ahead, Councilman.
You were talking to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you, Madam President, I'm glad this issue has now become a priority for the mayor and council, and I'm happy with most of the changes made, thank you, Councilman Plasky. As a result of the pandemic, the closure of the train station overnight, and other factors, uh, there was a big increase in the number of homeless individuals, reaching a peak of over 60 at the end of 2022 and beginning of 2023, and which was subsequently brought down in 2023 to about 20 people. Mayor Radist, without the formality of a task force, I think we called it a working group, uh, pulled together the stakeholders involved in this conversation for the first time at the end of 2022, for several productive meetings to coordinate the efforts of the groups working with the homeless. This group also met with officials from Bergen County, which has achieved functional zero homelessness for chronic and veterans, and Mike Callahan, Director of the State's Office of Homeless Prevention, to learn about best practices. Director Callahan suggested that we join the Union County Continuum of Care, or COC for short. Despite, uh, council members Allen and Hamlet voting against it, Summit did become a member of the COC, the organization that brings together all the agencies and organizations in the county dealing with this issue. Right away, being part of that group allowed Councilmember Miniger and the nonprofits in Summit to witness firsthand how professionals with expertise in this field approach the work. The importance of coordinated entry, the importance of diversion, and the need for ongoing care, even after housing is achieved, and the obvious connection to affordable housing are all regularly emphasized by that group. The Warm Hearts Program, along with Grace, Ship, Bridges, and several other groups, came together to more closely coordinate and professionalize services that were already being provided, and as I said, the number of homeless individuals in Summit fell in 2023 from over 60 to around 20. The Interfaith Council, which is primarily responsible for Warm Hearts, is owed a tremendous debt of gratitude for taking on an outstanding share of the burden. What happened in this community last year, the way so many came together to wrap their arms around our neighbors, is nothing short of amazing. Thank God for Warm Hearts. And I also need to thank Bridges, the organization most closely responsible for the dramatic step up in case management that has actually led to long, long-term, stable housing for many in this community, and certainly many others within their service area throughout the state. Folks in this community might not know that the Warm Hearts Program was hosting homeless people overnight in the winter months. Their program cost $93,000 to run this past winter, and it ended in March. So now, without anywhere to sleep, we are seeing some of these 20 homeless people again in public spaces like the train station, the bus stop, and the library. That is both non-surprising and an important piece of background information as we continue this conversation. I have three more things I'd like to say. First, I will not stand in the way of an effort to attempt to do the right thing and tackle homelessness, so I will support the creation of this task force. Second, I am hopeful that this is not just going to be performative, so the council members can go on social media and boast about all they're doing, when in fact, many others are doing the hard work. The people who are actually involved in dealing with homelessness are extremely busy people, they are dealing with the day-to-day of case management and very difficult personal situations of the unhoused. They're also already attending COC meetings. I hope the new task force does not waste their time, but rather adds to their ability to do their jobs. Also, I think it only makes sense that the council member who is the liaison to the COC should be on the task force. And third, the way that we can show this is real, that we're really committed, is to take three steps in addition to this task force. First, put our money where our mouth is. We know Warm Hearts costs roughly $100,000. Let's put it in the city budget. We're in the process of reviewing the budget right now, our budget is a statement of our actual priorities, let's make this a real priority right now. We've seen counties tackle homelessness, and we've seen other towns do it, too. Second, let's commit that we're willing to actually listen to the recommendations of this group and be open to all of them. Part of the reason we have homelessness is because some people have an income, but rent is simply too high. We must have a real discussion in this community about the pros and cons of local ordinances to address rent stabilization and rent assistance. Third, we know that unlike what Councilman Boyer said at a council meeting last year, this is more complicated and cannot be solved with, quote, "one phone call." We know that homelessness involves a variety of issues, from mental health, to substance abuse, to the very real lack of supportive housing. Getting someone a hotel room, or even actually into an apartment, saying good luck and closing the door is really not enough. It's my very sincere hope that the council is actually serious about tackling it, and that it will consider all possible actions to address these interconnected issues in a comprehensive manner. Thank you.
Okay, before I go to the floor, um, for the council members, I just wanna say, um, you're particularly edgy tonight, Councilman Vartan. Um, I voted no because, um, there wasn't an option to abstain on votes, um, because you've never given us the opportunity to abstain on votes. Um, and with the reason why we, why I, I won't speak for Councilwoman Hamlet, um, the reason why I had voted no, aside from not being able to abstain, abstain, is because, one, I did ask to be on the working group, um, and was not included. Um, there were many people who went down to, or went up to Bergen and did a field trip to see functional zero, and did not feel that it was important enough to share it with other members of the council. If it was so important and non-political, um, I was not a part of that. And third, um, I, there, when you go, you went to the COC website, there was a dead link. I did my homework when we actually went through the COC process, I called Morris County, I called Essex, there were other counties that had fully functional websites working, and you could actually see how the COC worked. And I said, why are we signing up for a program that I can do no homework on? So respectfully, I was not saying, voting no to helping the homeless or the COC, I felt like there wasn't enough information, and it's our job as council members to not be political and do our homework and make sure we have the right information. So I just wanna make that clear, and I'm gonna give it to the floor, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Uh, yes, thank you, Council President, you know, Councilman Vartan, I find it personally offensive, uh, that you continue to say that I voted no on the COC when you well, you well know that we could not abstain. So that must've been a really long speech for you to write, but, but what I'd like to ask you, have you ever been in a homeless shelter? Have you ever spent quality time with homeless people? Because I do it all the time, and in fact, I haven't been to a homeless shelter, and I, I actually said to the mayor there, they said, let's go, let's go to the homeless shelter. I spend more time with homeless people. I would, I challenge you right now to tell me five homeless individuals' names in the City of Summit. I spend time with these people, so I find it offensive that you do not value my interactions with these homeless people, and just say that I voted no on the COC. Thank you.
Councilman Miniger.
To be Council President, what expertise do you bring to their situation? That's what I wanna know. They don't need a friend, I'm sorry, may I?
Yes, yeah, please do not interrupt.
Council President, calling a council member who expresses himself passionately, especially about this issue, which is extremely important, you called him particularly edgy tonight, and that's pretty offensive. No one up here, what, can you imagine any of us ever saying that to the council president? Pretty, pretty edgy there, Council President, no one would do that. Um, I do have some comments. Um, on the topic of goal-setting and assessment, this group will deal directly with folks in a very vulnerable condition. We need to not just have the overarching goal of minimizing and ending homelessness in Summit, which is an honorable one for sure, and included in the resolution, which I'm glad about, but measurable periodic goals that are realistic and achievable in these periodic bursts, be it monthly or quarterly, et cetera. Um, I hope that the community members who are asked to join this group will have a meaningful connection to the unhoused population, either professional expertise in areas that, such as mental health counseling, or other medical care, trauma-informed care, social services, or even past personal experience with homelessness. And finally, although it is springtime, one of the things this group really needs to consider, pretty soon, believe it or not, is how they will function in the fall and the winter in conjunction with Summit Warm Hearts. I agree with what Councilmember Vartan said, they are, uh, what an amazing group, they did some amazing work this year. If anyone from Warm Hearts is here tonight, thank you, you know who you are. Um, I hope this group will work with Summit Warm Hearts in their efforts during the colder months as well. We, uh, we've gone from an unhoused population of around 67 in 2022 to roughly 20-something in 2024. Experience and expertise really matters in this type of effort, and we need to make sure that we build on what has already been accomplished in our city by the professionals, by amazing collaborations and service organizations that exist for this purpose. Thank you.
Before, just 'cause you guys, Councilman Plasky, we have to give people an opportunity.
So, what we have here is, um, a very good resolution for a very good purpose, and, it's disappointing that Councilman, uh, Vartan, uh, took it as an opportunity to make a defensive speech, um, and Councilman Miniger also campaigning from the dais, um, but we won't let it discourage us, uh, we will move forward with this and continue to do the best that we can for everybody in this town.
Thank you, man, thank you, Councilman.
Uh, thank you, Council President, you know, Councilman Miniger, when you asked me what expertise do I provide in homelessness, I provide empathy, and what I also provide is, as a veteran, we noticed a huge gap in the veteran homelessness services that Union County and Bridges, when, when we look at the veterans who are coming to Bridges, and you can talk to Rich from Bridges, we really solved something as a veteran, by me reaching out to them as a veteran, and now we have contacts at the county. That is how I will continue to provide value, maybe not expertise, but empathy and value. Thank you.
Council President, I, I believe the rubbish rule say we have to go around once, right? We hear everybody before other council persons talk three or four times. Um, no, no problem, uh, Councilwoman Hamlet. Here's the problem, right? This is the problem with, you know, stuff like homelessness, drug addiction, affordable housing, um, you make it all political, and at the end of the day, nothing gets done, right? So, if I found one person somewhere to stay, is that a problem? Like, it, what, how do, how do you make that a negative thing? Oh, um, Councilwoman Hamlet, you, you found one person to, um, you know, have permanent housing, and, you know, you put that on Facebook, and the person was so excited and everything, what, what's the negative, what's negative about that? Like, that, I mean, like, completely political. We had people living in the bus station last year, and then we talk about how we decreased homelessness. Political, right? Like, but I will say this, the Supreme Court just had a hearing the other day, and I guess I had nothing to do for three hours, so I listened to the whole entire thing, and I wanna tell you that the arguments were, um, very passionate on both sides, and it opened my eyes to a couple of different things. One thing is that, you know, the proponents that argue that laws which criminalize, uh, sleeping in public, say that it's a fundamental right, you know, just like eating, drinking, right? Everyone has the right to sleep, and when you think about that, you know, it, it really, it really makes you think, right? You're in a public space, you got a blanket, 'cause this was about a blanket, right? You couldn't have a blanket and a, and a cardboard box, right? Like, you know, you get a summons for that, you couldn't do that. So you're in a public space, you're laying down, and you gotta sleep. Listen, the, and the mayor knows, she's a, she's a, she's a doctor, you know, sleeping is essential for living, I can understand it. Now, the other flip side of it is, you know, how do we balance that with continuing to have our activities in those public spaces when they are occupied by folks sleeping? So imagine the village green, right? And we have 50 people, the Supreme Court says, listen, the, you know, you, you can't criminalize people for sleeping in public spaces. So now we have 100 people in our village green, everybody's sleeping, now we can't have any shows, right? There's no, you know, ice skating, I mean, this may sound like a mundane thing, right? Because people are sleeping and, but, you know, we, we need to still continue to be a community, right? We can't have people just sleeping everywhere, so it's like we, we come around in a full circle, what are we gonna do with homelessness? We've been dealing with. We've been dealing with this for 100 years. So let's not make it political and say, "Yeah, you know, we solved it last year, or we decreased it last year, and I hope this isn't an attempt to politicize this." I mean, what if the mayor didn't do anything, right? Then we would be saying, "Why is the mayor not doing anything about homelessness?" So the mayor actually comes out and says, "I'm going to start a committee on, to investigate homelessness and how we can attack it." Then it's like, "Well, this is all political. I hope, you know, I hope it's not." I mean, what, listen, we all need to stop. We need to stop. We need to come together, and we need to work this thing out together. Forget about last year. Forget about the COC, new year, 2024, right? Let's figure out what we can do with our homeless population. I know, like, Councilman Hamlet, I know several of them. My wife gives folks backpacks, she's such a good person, backpacks, pants, socks, underwear, sees them on the street, in the 7-Eleven. She knows, like, most of them, right? I mean, so let's stop playing the games. Let's stop playing the political games. Let's move on. Let's accomplish something, whatever we can accomplish together, and stop this back-and-forth, not debate, Councilman Miniger. Let's stop this back-and-forth, you know, accusing people of being political, and move as a team to solve, to solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Boyer.
To the Council President.
I just want to say that I appreciate that. It is time to, unfortunately, tonight, like Councilman Plowski said, we have something on the agenda that is, it has a lot of opportunity for a lot of different types of people with professional backgrounds who, and personal backgrounds, who want to come together and solve this. And so, thank you for the levity. Councilman Smallwood, did you have something?
Yes. I'm clearly not a politician because I didn't have any prepared statements on this topic. I didn't think that we would be 20 minutes into this resolution and talking about it. This is, I'm actually dumbfounded right now. I, this is probably one of the best things that this council, at least I've been a part of in the last three months that, that we've done so far. I don't care if we have one homeless person, 30, 60, 26, whatever, you know, Councilman Vartan said we had currently. One person's too many. And I applaud Grace and the Interfaith Council and SHIP and Summit Warm Hearts for the great work that they do. And we still have homelessness. One too many. And in terms of, you know, this committee, we're going to have, I think, some very qualified people on this task force. The chief of police or his designee, the fire chief or his designee, superintendent of public schools, because I believe that we have some homeless, homeless children. And just to top, to take, I mean, we have a representative from the Board of Health, representative from Overlook Medical Center. And I believe one of the things was adding five city resident-at-large because we wanted to have some, five residents in the five different elementary schools in those districts so that we can help those children, that we can identify how many homelessness, how many children who are homeless in those districts. So in terms of, you know, having qualified people on this task force, I think we're covering all of our bases here. And again, I'm kind of mad at myself. I'm taking up three minutes on this conversation. I figured we'd be done by now and I'd be, be home. So with that, this, I'm going to give this my absolute 100% support behind this, and I promise, and of course, you know, politicians making promises, and I did write this down, I will not post on social media about how successful or unsuccessful this task force may become because I am not a politician. Thank you.
Do you want the last word? Because Councilman Miniger still has another, okay, I'll get, go ahead, Councilman Miniger.
No, it's fine. I'm in support of this. I think that's the funny thing. The mention of things being politicized, my three things were recommendations on how to make this better, how to, how to assess it, how to set goals. I wanted to ask to make sure that community members had some kind of connection to, to people who have experienced homelessness in some way and to work with Warm Hearts. None of those are, none of those are politics. None of those are campaign promises or campaigning. And I mentioned the numbers, which was 67 in 22 to 20. Those are numbers. Those aren't, those aren't politicized. Those aren't politics things. Those are real things. So I think this is going to be a good thing.
I agree, Councilman Miniger. I'm sorry to go out of turn, but I wanted to tell them I agree. I don't think anything you said is.
Just have a quick, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Can I add something?
One second. I just, can we just confirm, Councilman Vartan? You don't need to do that. I am just curious if that 66 was a point-in-time number released from Monarch. I know the number from Union County was 667, but where's the 66 coming from? Because I don't think that was the point-in-time number in 2022.
It was not, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
67, 67 was the count at some point in 2022, our highest number.
But where was that count from? Because it wasn't from the Monarch study.
Right.
It's the only point-in-time count that Union County does.
Right, it was local count.
Who did that?
That was people local. I don't know if it was Warm Hearts or if it was another.
But it wasn't an, it wasn't the point in, I think it's really important to clarify that it was not the point-in-time count in 2022.
Correct. It's before we were, yeah, that didn't, that hadn't happened yet.
So 60, you can't compare 66 to 22. It's statistically not significant.
I think it is.
It's not. It's not the, I'm just saying, let's, trust that they're.
May I interrupt?
I think we're largely in agreement.
Because I think what's really important is what Kevin just said, sorry, Councilman Smallwood just said, which is, one is too many. We know we have a homeless population in Summit. The goal of this task force is very sincere and genuine. I like to help people. I've spent my entire life helping people. And I will ensure, and we all will, because it's a mayor, it's a mayor selection with council approval, we will all make sure that the right people are at the table because I don't want to waste my time. I spend a lot of time doing things for free, and I want to be sure that if I'm adding another thing to my plate, I want to make a difference. It's really important to me. And I would, I would add that we, I do believe that every single person up here wants the same thing. And so let's not argue about numbers. Let's not argue about posting on social media or who does what. Let's talk about solutions. This will be a way to collaborate and have our amazing organizations that are also already doing incredible work to do it even better. Thank you.
I just ran out with one quick thing. So we are all in agreement, right? And we're all going to vote in support of it. I think it's great that the community gets to see us having this kind of a discussion, right? I don't think the community wants us to be doing things in lockstep or have no discussion and just pass it, right? So what I did was to provide the history and background, state my hopes for this task force, and that I would support it, which I will. Second, the issue with council members getting involved in the day-to-day of case management is that, one, we don't actually know what we're doing. And two, when a council member intervenes on behalf of someone but not somebody else, it causes actual, real jealousy and concern in the homeless community, and it's a big problem. And, and the third thing is, I, my simple stated position is I do not believe people should be used as political pawns. And that is a political position. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
But what are you saying? You're saying a council person can't see somebody, I know Ron, and you know what? I want to get Ron an apartment or whatever. I want to help this person. You're saying that the council person shouldn't be involved?
I think we need to be really, really careful and to engage with the people who are professionals in this field. That's what I'm saying.
I think if you're, if you are a human being and you have an opportunity to give somebody or find somebody a place to live and leverage your, your position as a council person or mayor, even if it's one person, do it. I mean, that's, that's ridiculous to say, "Okay, well, I have an opportunity to work with this person to get them an apartment or whatever, but I'm not going to do it. I'm going to let the professionals do it so they can wait six, seven months or whatever." If you have an opportunity to help somebody, help somebody. I mean, that's, that's political, not helping them. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't understand. And I'm sorry, you know, but.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Boyer. I do want to recognize, in some of my frustration around the COC discussion because of my stance, I do want to recognize that there are a lot of great organizations that have done amazing work. And the previous mayor, Mayor Radist, and her working group absolutely did come together to do the right thing because they really cared about the issue. So I think, to your point, Mayor, that everyone at this dais cares about homeless. And I think no matter what you're talking about, every single emotional issue that we touch in this day and age, nothing fits in a perfect box. And so sometimes we think if you don't take on the advocacy in the way that you want someone to, then all of a sudden, it's not honest or earnest or empathetic, and it's not real. We all approach the things that we care about in different ways. And so we cannot vilify each other on how we approach this. So I want to thank you, Mayor, for taking the time to put this together. It's, I know it's one of your top priorities that you had talked about last year and early this year. I applaud you for doing this, and I welcome all the volunteers that are going to be engaged on it. So thank you. I'm going to close, we're going to stop talking about this now. One last comment.
I just want to say, we have spent a lot of time not talking about this slam dunk resolution. And I'd like to hear if the public has anything they'd like to say about it so we can put it to bed.
Yes. I would like to hear public comments.
Dennis and Harry L., 14 Broad Street, Summit, New Jersey. I would just like to sum up what, and coincide with what Mayor Fagan said, I just want to phrase it a little differently. I think that words matter, task force matters, committees matter. She used the word, she's looking for a solution. So I would just say that all of those things matter. But my synonym for solution would be action speaks louder than all of them. So let's do the work and do the right thing. Thank you.
Hi, Claire Torth at 11 Sunset Drive. And I win the contest for nitpickyest comment because I can't possibly improve on what Reverend Harrell said. But there is a typo that you probably want to amend before you pass the resolution. In the next-to-last whereas clause, when you get rid of all the ing's, you changed investigating into not a real word.
I caught it.
Thank you.
Reverend Dr. Robin Tanner, oh, I won't take all that time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
If you need to. For Waldron Ave., President of the Summit Interfaith Council, let's continue our work, get to work, and do better work together. I know all of those things are possible. Thank you.
I just want to.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Pierre, hold on one second.
Does Councilman Warren make amendments?
Yeah, so is it too late? Because I know that Councilman Boyer wanted to make some amendments, so.
He has to make a motion.
Okay.
Correct, Mr. Jacoby?
Well, you take a comment, you can take the comment, but then you give just a motion to amend and second.
At the end? Okay, okay, sorry, go ahead.
Peter Lejoy, 124 Canoe Brook Park, West Summit, New Jersey. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm really shocked that something positive, and I think it was reflected very positively on by the reverend, is turned into a glass half-full. And people trying to get merit badges for helping the unhoused population really need to think twice. I applaud what the mayor is doing. I applaud what this, this council is doing to try to help the unhoused population. I have had experiences with the unhoused population, I currently and in the past have, and includes unhoused high school students. So to say that a council person who served honorably in the military and understands homelessness among the veteran population is unqualified to help somebody, or to say that the churches, who have volunteers, who have no training in this at all, are not qualified to help somebody, is just absurd. And as far as dialogue along this dais here, we're finally hearing dialogue because for the last six years, I didn't hear any dialogue. I was just hearing people being told to shut. So that's where I will leave it tonight. Thank you for this resolution, Mayor. Thank you, Reverend. Very honorable comment. And thank you, Council, for doing it.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Okay. I would like to make a motion, Councilman Boyer and Councilman Plowski, were there additional changes that you wanted to make or are we?
Councilman Plowski, did you?
Yeah, I read them.
You read them, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we read them in.
Your changes were read by the council?
Yes.
Oh, your changes were?
Yes.
And not just Councilman Vartan's?
I read all the changes from what was posted on Friday.
Okay, okay, all right.
So motion and second was done.
Excellent, okay. All right, so I'd like to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I think that deserves a round of applause. All right. Good job, Mayor. Okay. I'd like to go to the second law and labor resolution, Councilman Plowski.
This is Resolution ID Number 11192. As per our discussion in closed session, I move to authorize execution of a confidential settlement agreement associated with our parking services agency.
I second.
Okay. Council comments? Public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capitol Projects and Community Services, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes, this, thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11047, which will endorse the submission of a recycling tonnage report for 2023 to New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Bureau of Recycling and Planning. I would like to move this resolution.
I second.
Council comments?
And everyone's going to, I know, I know, I know, I do it to myself. This is actually something that I should have looked at five days ago, but upon further, Rosie, here's my question. Can we add, we have to submit this no later than April 30th? How do we add that? Do we have to do an amendment? I just really want to make sure, we have to get this through August, oh, sorry, April 30th. It's now, what's today's date?
24th.
So it's Wednesday. So through you, Council President, I guess Director Schreger, do we have everything locked up as far as when she signs it? I think there's like five pieces, there's compliance. I just want to make sure that, heaven forbid, if you were on vacation next week, that we 100% get it there on, on April 30th. So I don't know if we need to put that in here, if it matters or.
I think respectfully, Council President, that Mr. Schreger has successfully submitted that without that language in there before. I don't know why it's needed now.
Okay, that's fine.
But that's my personal opinion.
Okay, that's fine. But the only other thing I wanted to say is that what's in the council packet, we have, you sent me that email, right? We've added the actual 2023 recycling data versus what's in the packet. So I don't know if that just is a minute thing for next time? We just amend the minutes? So we actually have the actual, I didn't get a chance to talk to you, Rosie, today. I apologize. Don't be mad at me.
So explain that again.
So what's in the council packet is a snapshot of the expenditure report, but we have the actual 2023 Excel sheet that's like three pages to attach to the minutes. Or maybe when she signs it, we just attach it to the minutes?
I would have to defer to you, but yes.
If the councilwoman would like me to make that a denim to the minutes, is there any objection to that, Mr. Jacoby?
None.
Okay, sorry, that's, that's the only changes I have.
Okay.
Okay. Other council comments? Public comments? All right, we're going to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Councilwoman Hamlet, your next resolution.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 10948, which will authorize a resolution, which will authorize the second
which will authorize a resolution, which will authorize the second five-year extension, lease portion of three Constantine Place for construction and maintenance of one monopole and related facilities. The dates are June 25th, 2024, through June 24th, 2029. I'd like to move this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Council comments? Public comments? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to your third resolution.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 11150, which will, as discussed in closed session previously tonight, which will declare a vacancy in the Department of Community Services, Division of Public Works, the Roads Unit, which will be a full-time maintenance worker. And this was pending closed session discussion. I'd like to move this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Council comments? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to the consent agenda.
Council President, excuse me for a moment.
Sure.
The fire chief had expressed an interest in showing, sharing a video of the resolution. That's number one, under safety and consent.
Absolutely.
If you're okay with that, if I may?
Yeah.
Do you want to, do you want to preface it by saying anything?
Yeah. Please, please come on up.
Yes, Council President, yeah, this is a resolution, like a consent agenda, to authorize Fire Department teams to go down to National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend. So they're based out of Embersburg, Maryland. Their mission is to honor and support America's fallen firefighters and their families and organizations, and also prevent federal deaths. So every year, they do the big memorial down at Embersburg, Maryland, where we have all the firefighters that have killed and previously honored. This year, there's two 120s, like firefighters honored. Eighty of them died in line of duty in 2023, and 146 died previously from injuries, and also cancer, there's a big deal in fires, a lot of them died from cancer from 9/11, another exposure in the fire service. So they bring all the families in, the team goes down from Summit on Wednesday. We help set up the event. The event is on Sunday, the 5th. Good organization, people all over the country come, it's well-attended, the president of the past organizations, and the weekend, so it's a great, great time to be at there. So, but that was a highlight from the event that came from 2022's weekend, so.
We welcome you to the 2023 National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend. We stand with you honoring and remembering your firefighters as you cherish their memories.
I put a penny down under my dad.
My husband dated a snake.
Yes.
Oh, like I would miss my heart. My heart, he kept my heart.
Our fire heroes who lost their life while faithfully serving their family, community, city, nation, and their fellow man. If I can tell somebody his tragedy rose, then my debris shall not be in there. Rare is the individual who runs towards danger, and rare still is the individual who does so only to help others. That is the firefighter. That is the 144 fallen heroes we honor this weekend. Heroes who gave their lives in the service of others.
It's my wish for you that the flame that you see here at the memorial site and the flame that you carry in your hearts will bring you hope, strength, and perseverance.
And all of your answers lie waiting for you here.
If I may, this is one more program that's a foundation of, like, businesses and citizens to participate in a component of this event to March 1, to May 1 to 5. Light the lights for firefighters, so welcome by to show red lights in the home, the businesses, to honor all the firefighters leading up to the event on the 5th, so. Thank you. And you can also go to www.fire.org, look at the information, how you can participate in the event at the Port of Fire Service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's a reminder why we appreciate you. The video is a reminder why we appreciate you, the Fire Department. Okay. All right, at this time, I'm gonna, we're gonna vote on the consent. Motion, sorry. Yeah, thank you. Motion for consent agenda? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Okay, do I have council comments on anything on the consent agenda?
Couple comments. Thank you.
Number one is on the 11204. Of course, I'm extremely supportive of the Fire Department heading down there again and representing Summit at the Fire Academy memorial activities. The second is on 11215. So I do not support the bid authorization, because I do not support the capital project. This funding is partially for a private piece of property. That means council's taking everyone's hard-earned tax dollars and sending it to a project on one family's property. To be clear, the money will benefit just one family and no one else in the community. It seems to send a message, if you show up to council meetings, complain, and support the candidates who won the last election, that you can be rewarded with public funds for your private project. To me, that is unacceptable. It is a bad precedent, and I cannot support it. Thank you.
Three, Council President?
Councilman Miniger.
I have a comment on the same, the same resolution. So I agree with Councilmember Vartan entirely on this, which is why I will also not vote to approve it. This city is paying for something we are not responsible for, essentially. I have a very similar example I can give you. Some of my neighbors on Morris Avenue have complained about a utility company that destroyed the fence when cutting down some trees. If that company is repairing, is not repairing the fence, is Summit now going to do so? Based on what we're seeing in this resolution, if it passes, this is now a reasonable expectation. Summit taxpayer money now goes toward private property improvements. Councilmember Vartan also used one of my favorite terms to me earlier today, the word fiduciary. Yes, I agree with you. We are fiduciaries. As council members, we all have fiduciary duty to Summit taxpayers as a whole, to do what is in the best interest of the city. Voting for this, to me, represents a shirking of fiduciary responsibility to the residents of Summit. They trust us to do what is best for everyone, and this is a violation of that trust. I will be voting against it, and I hope some of you will agree with me here. So I would like to request that we pull this out, if that's possible, from the.
Okay. Thank you, Miniger. Thank you, Councilman Miniger. Councilwoman Hamlet?
I was just gonna ask if we're gonna pull this out. If we're gonna pull it out, we should do it appropriately.
Yeah. Okay, we'll pull it out.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
We, we also have a duty to protect the few, as we do the many. And in this case, there's a resident who came up here for three years. And I mean, the story about what happened to her property is, you know, is unbelievable. And the idea to restore this family back to the original condition that their house was in, because the city and the developer destroyed their property. I don't see how that is un-uniformed, right? I mean, I think one of our responsibilities is to protect any individual, right? Regardless of, you know, if it, if there was 100 taxpayers. If someone wronged you, I mean, you would expect that you have council people that would come up here and, 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 um, and, you know, negotiate on your behalf. You know, if it's wrong, what's wrong is wrong, what's right is right. So I, you know, I just wanted to say that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Boyer. Councilman Plowski, I'm sorry, wait really quick. Did you raise your hand? Okay, you're next.
You want to go first? Go ahead.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
I'd ask Councilman Plowski to go first, and specifically, Councilman Vartan. I believe we had a conversation with our city administrator. And through you, Council President, I think it would be important, you know, I've read the settlement agreement 5,000 times for Ashwood Court. I've reviewed the zoning board approvals a few times today. We've printed them out in 11-by-sevens, and we are obviously all genuinely concerned about the residents down at Ashwood Court. Regardless of how you feel that this may be taking one resident and fixing their property, the facts are there are settlement, there's a settlement agreement, there's a zoning board of adjustment jurisdiction on this property, and we have received advice from our city administrator that it's the city's responsibility to fix this property. You were in this meeting, Councilman Vartan. Through you, Council President, I'd like to ask Michael Rogers for his opinion.
So in addition to fiduciary responsibilities, you have an obligation to uphold your end of a settlement agreement, which that was a part of the settlement agreement. So I would just want to remind the council to abide by the settlement agreement, and this is consistent. May I?
Wait, Council President? Councilman Plowski first, and then you guys.
The only problem with this resolution is that we didn't do it a long time ago. It's long overdue. You should have done it last year.
Councilman Miniger, and then Councilman Vartan. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Councilman Vartan.
So my position is, as I read the settlement agreement, it's not clear to me that we have an obligation to fund this. The project is finished. If this resident believes that more work needs to be done, it's a private matter between this resident and Habitat, their neighbor. Councilman Plowski said at a council meeting last year, we should send Habitat the bill.
We should.
I'm betting, though, that it's not going to happen. And I'm betting that what's going to happen is that the city's going to take out debt, and the taxpayers of this community are going to pay it off, and Habitat's never going to pay it. So my, my position is simply, when we're using tax dollars, we need to feel confident it's for the public good, and I can't support it in good conscience. That's where I am. Thank you.
Miss, I was gonna say, Mr. Jacoby, did you want to weigh in on this at all?
We wrote letters on behalf of the council to Habitat over this wall. This isn't, this was an ongoing issue. And the wall, I mean, let's back up. The Habitat affordable housing went on this property, and as part of that construction process, this retaining wall was damaged. We actually had Mr. Schreger go out, because I was involved in it, writing to the Habitat attorney, and it couldn't be repaired. I mean, it was so structurally, it wasn't stable. You couldn't repair it. So there is a settlement agreement, and I think that, you know, this isn't, I think the public should realize, this is part of the overall construction that took place on that property, and that was, and the, and the damage to this wall was part of that construction. So in that process, I don't think this is, it's not like the city council's going out and, you know, coming to my house and fixing my retaining wall. This happened because of the Habitat construction. And but for that, it would not have occurred. So there was a settlement agreement. We did communicate. I'm not going to reveal what we'll do with Habitat. That's something that we can discuss in closed session. But we did have communications, and I've had several letters to their attorney about this very wall, and the settlement agreement, which obligates the city and Habitat to repair it.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood?
I, actually, everything he just said, I was, he answered my questions.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Do we have any other further council comments? Councilman Plowski?
Just, just one more. I mean, look, under the settlement agreement, okay, there are several parties that are responsible for putting Humpty Dumpty back together again, okay? And we've learned that we can't count on Habitat for Humanity to do the right thing. We can't count on the developer to do the right thing, and who does that leave? It leaves us, all right? We're going to do this. It's the right thing to do. We should have done it a long time ago.
Okay, on Resolution 11204, are there any public comments?
11204 is fire.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, 11135. My apologies.
I guess I do have another question?
Is that the right one? No, no, isn't it?
11125.
Yeah, 112.
111.
1125, yes, about the Ashwood Court.
It's the wall, right?
Yeah, it's the wall.
Is that the one you're speaking on? Okay.
I'm looking at the, it's a very simple procedural question. You don't need that. It says here that it's, funding for this project has been requested in the 2024 capital budget. And in my prior series of Too Many Questions for Your Liking, I addressed the fact that I thought the capital budget was pretty high. So I'm wondering if we are in the habit of approving expenses before the respective budget gets approved.
Thank you. Councilman, I feel like that's a Michael question. Yeah.
We're not, you're not authorizing expenditure for anything. You're authorizing the administration to advertise for a bid, to submit a bid. And that will take place over time. It's assumed that the budget will be in place, and we couldn't award a contract until funding is in place. So there's a number of financing procedural things we'll have to do before that. So we are, you're not authorizing the expenditure of any funds this evening.
Councilwoman Hamlet, and then Councilman Miniger.
Yes, I would agree. I mean, I think that the discussions around putting this in tonight's council packet, obviously, we have to adopt the budget. So we could never do anything in this project if the budget was not adopted. And I think that those residents would like their property fixed at some sort of capacity. I would like to ask, through you, Council President, Michael Rogers, I was looking tonight around time performance for a contract. And I was reading that the specifications for a contract can contain a fixed date for completion of a project. Is that something we can do for something like this? Because I think the frustration from some of the residents is, it's going to go out to bid, it's going to be the summertime, and then we're going to run into September, October, and they're still not going to get it fixed. I'm just concerned that with this specifically, and maybe we don't have to do it for this one, but can we put time constraints on bids?
We do, but.
On, on the project completion?
Yes. We do that. So we will.
Okay, thank you.
Last year, we put some parking poles, some 15-minute parking poles in the ground, in the sidewalk, in anticipation of passing later that week, a parking resolution. 15-minute parking. We got phone calls from the public. And I believe you followed up with me, because you got angry phone calls. And I, I said, you know what? You're absolutely right. This should not have been done before, and I talked to, at the time, I talked to Parking at that time, and I said, we should not have done this. I do not see a difference between that and what we're doing right now. I would like to request to table this resolution until after the budget passes.
You have to make, you have to move the table. There has to be a second. There has to be a vote on that, and if it, so that's what happens. You have to have a second.
Do you, do you need a supermajority for tabling? So we'll take a vote on the.
It's a, it's, he, so Mr. Miniger made a motion.
Yep.
If there's a second, we do a roll call. What?
No, no one, no, yeah.
Nobody made a second, so he has to make a second.
And then we'll take a roll call vote.
Isn't there comments after you table something, right? Isn't it open in the comments?
You have to vote on the table before you do anything else.
Okay. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boyer?
Nay.
Ms. Hamlet?
Nay.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Plaski?
Nay.
Mr. Smallwood?
Nay.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Nay.
Motion fails. So now you go back to the original motion.
Okay. So I just wanted to make a quick comment, and I'll come to you, Councilwoman Hamlet. Councilman Miniger, you are right. People were upset about putting the poles in, because I was also upset, because people did call, and they were not supposed to put them in. However, I do not think this is at all the same thing. The poles went in at the time that they, we didn't even approve the, the. The poles went in at the time that they, we didn't even approve the, the resolution. So this is to authorize a bid, so there's no physical work that's actually being done. I, that's how I see the difference, so, Councilwoman Hamlet.
By the way, Councilman Miniger, we authorized the parking spaces, we didn't authorize the parking department to put the poles in a week earlier. Let's be very clear. When the public called us and yelled at us, what we should've said is, that was the department that put the poles on, we didn't approve to put the signs out before we put the resolution. This is completely different. You were in the committee with me, you know that.
Yeah, putting the signs in was part of the sign, part of the parking spaces.
It wasn't part of the resolution. We didn't say, go put the parking, go put the parking signs in before we passed the resolution.
No.
No, we said, put, pass the resolution, and then put the parking signs in. No one directed the parking department to put the signs in before we passed the resolution, you were in the committee with me.
Respectfully, you don't see the connection between signs and then parking spaces exactly part of the signs?
We're not directing the city to fix the wall right now, we're directing to go out to bid.
To bid.
That still really, that really assumes that our budget will be passed. It assumes it, you gotta be honest.
Well, you don't have to take the bids, you can put it out to bid.
We can put out to bid for anything, regardless if we have money in the budget for it or not. Okay, fine. Doesn't matter.
Well, I hear what you're saying.
We heard, we heard.
If our budget's passed, then maybe we don't fix the wall fixed.
Okay.
Council President, I'm just a little confused. What does parking and signs have to do with destroying someone's property? I'm not, I'm missing, am I missing something here?
I can explain it, if you wanted me to go through it again.
Because, I mean, I remember what you're talking about, and I don't think people were complaining that it costs money to put the signs in, I think people were complaining that the signs were already in before a resolution was ever passed, which was assuming that it was going to pass.
I'm gonna let Councilman Miniger respond, and then, okay.
So it's two, it's two different things. I'm upset about the money being spent at all, I don't think we should be spending money on this at all, I think it's private property, that's one entirely separate issue. Sorry, may I have my moment to speak?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I'm getting laughs from the right-hand side, which is pretty rude. The second thing is, I'm asking to table this, because I think we are doing something ahead of time, we are assuming that this is going, the budget's passing, we're assuming all kinds of stuff, and I said, we should table this until after the budget passes, so that we're not doing something ahead of time. It's exactly the same as something we did last year, yeah, last year or two years ago, with Parking, which is, we were getting ready to vote on some parking spaces, and in anticipation of that, the city put in some poles in the ground, and we, yes, we did not vote, we didn't tell them to do that, but that, that happened ahead of time. Stuff done ahead of time before a vote is, is a little upsetting, so that's, that's what I was getting at with my request to table.
Okay. Council President? But I, I still, we're talking about someone's property that was destroyed, and no one's taking responsibility for it. So I, you know, I'm looking at this as not even a budget thing, I'm looking at this as, you know, someone's property has been destroyed, and it needs to be, it wasn't done by them. It was done by the construction manager, it was done by the engineer, whoever it was done by, right? Part of that was the city.
Statements like that will absolutely make us liable for it. Statements that destroyed by the city, the city was partly liable for the destruction, I mean, that's...
Someone's property, someone's property was destroyed, not by their own, but by...
Not by Summit.
All right. I just, before I go back over here, I just, did you have any questions, Councilman Boyer?
I...
I thought you looked at me like you had a question.
This has been a, an awkward night, like, I just feel like there's so much lack of compassion tonight, like, oh my goodness. That, that's it, I...
Okay. Councilman Plasky first.
I just, my recollection of this whole sign thing was that before it was passed, holes were put in concrete, new signs were put in, concrete was, was put down, I actually sent an email saying, hey, what's up? And I was told by Councilman Miniger, oh, we're gonna take those away right away, and I'm like, what, are you crazy? You're gonna take them away? We spent all that money to put them in, you're gonna take them away for, for a resolution that's gonna inevitably pass? You know, common sense is underrated these days.
Wait, uh...
You disagree, it's fine.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
The last thing I will say is, I think if Director Schreger had gone out for bid last week, and we were talking about this resolution, you might be able to compare that to the signs. That is a favorite, that is a fair comparison. If, if Director Schreger put the bids out last week, that is exactly what happened with the signs. That is, that is a identical comparison, but we did not do that.
Business Minister Roger, hold on.
I just wanna remind everybody, this, we are in a settlement agreement, we are abiding by a settlement agreement, so there's, this is in no way the same thing we were talking about with a parking sign. It's not the same thing. We have a legal obligation already, whether you agree with it or not, you weren't a part of negotiating that settlement agreement. I know what it was about. So this common council at the time approved the settlement agreement. It was about repairing that wall. There were three parties involved, the city, Habitat, and a prospective developer for that property that we still own over there. Habitat fixed a part of their, their site on their property. It's the city of Summit's obligation. That's where we are, we're trying to just get ahead, it's a process to go out to bid, it will take place after the public hearing on the budget, and we'll, we'll proceed accordingly. Funding has to be in place before a, a contract is awarded, so...
Any part of that settlement agreement we're not, we're not completing? Is there any part of that settlement agreement we're not doing? You don't have to answer that question, it's just...
I, I won't, because it's irrelevant to this.
Wait, hold on. Out of curiosity, do you remember the year it was settled? What year did the council...
I believe that, I think it was 2022.
No, 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 the settlement agreement?
2020.
2020.
2020, we think we eventually signed it, it was 1920.
Okay. Councilman Boyer, and then Hamlet, and then I think we're done.
No, I'm good, I just, I, I, I just don't understand why we're talking about mistakes from last year, and, you know, I hope everyone learned from the, the polls that were put in, I mean, I'm glad you all learned a lesson, but this is not, this has nothing to do with that. And settlement agreement was 2020 or 2024, I'm just saying, I mean, let's, again, let's have compassion and move on.
Okay, thank you.
I would say, and through you, Council President, Director Schreger, you might be able to opine on this, but the, the appropriate venue going forward, if, if, through the zoning resolution, there are conditions, right? And how, how long does the zoning board have jurisdiction after postapproval, Director Schreger? Two years for certain things?
Typically, they put in a clause for two years for drainage.
Right. So, so going forward, I think it would be fair to say, if there are issues with stormwater management or things of that nature, then if, if the city cannot help or assist, then they would be able to appeal to the zoning board, is that correct?
If, now this was, and possibly, the solicitor can opine, because this, this was a complicated one, where also, it, it was a board application that became an agreement that had to go back to the board, so...
Well, there was litigation.
And with litigation as well, so...
I mean, there was, there was a legal challenge, this wasn't, the, the, the homeowners of, of Ashwood Court, the people who own this property, there was actually litigation, there's legal counsel involved, this wasn't, it just came out of thin air, there, there, it was complicated before the actual building took place. And if you recall, there was lots of discussions about the entrance off of Morris Avenue. I mean, that, that was a whole huge issue because of, I forget what, there was, I think it was an Italian restaurant or an Italian club, if I'm not mistaken?
Italian restaurant.
Being that I'm Italian, caught my interest. I'm a little hungry right now too, I haven't had dinner, so it's really getting going, but the, all, all of this came, became, was part of that litigation, and all, all, you're looking at the settlement, all that emanated out of that litigation.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment?
Don DeSherry, six Ashwood Court, it's my house, okay? Let's set the record straight, Councilman Vartan, Councilman Miniger, and I think you know it, it's not about a retaining wall, even Mr. Jacoby, there is a dozen different things on this, and we're not just talking about my property, the property in question is the city's property that's being fixed here. The retaining wall is a small portion of this, my retaining wall, which was broken, and it's being replaced because of that, because, again, as Mr. Jacoby said, there's a settlement agreement, we're all parties, Mayor Raddus was the one who signed this, okay? And the other portion of the retaining wall is being, because Habitat failed to put drainage behind it, and illegally pitched the water, which now comes over my wall, fucks my basement. And the city doesn't wanna go after Habitat, it's political, let's suspend with the ball. The city is the big portion that is being fixed here, the city has to bring back down the grade, the city failed to put basins in, and the city property was illegally pitched and now drains into my private basin, which the city 15 years ago, when my father owned my house, asked us, required us to do drainage work to the tune of $30,000, and then dumped it into my basin, okay? It's the city's property you're fixing, not my private property. Yes, there is a small portion of this project, which is my retaining wall, which, yes, they did break a portion, the other portion's being replaced because water was illegally pitched off the Habitat site, and now goes over onto my property, into my private drain system. You guys, the last administration, didn't wanna go after Habitat, surprise, surprise, and that's why. You're not fixing this, you're not doing this, let's call what is at the goodness of your heart, you're doing it out of legal obligation, you don't do, we sue, we win. Four attorneys have reviewed this, four, including Mr. Jacoby, you're obligated, you don't wanna go after Habitat, I don't care, whatever you wanna do, but you're fixing the city's property, that illegal plan was approved by the zoning board, because the feeling was, oh, will they really complain? I don't want on behind closed doors, is it really a big deal? Yeah, it is. 30 grand my father was spent on our drainage system, now Habitat put their water into it, it's not staying that way. This will happen one day, one way or the other, it's a guarantee.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Peter Lojo, 124 Hennepin. I have a question, really. Was this work bonded, and was the bond released to the, to the contract, was the contract released? Because I, I really think the city needs to look at how it releases bonds on public projects, because I can point to any number of them where work wasn't finished, and these people are made to post bonds, if the boards aren't requiring the right bonds, it's the city's engineers' responsibility to make sure we get the right bonds, and I just have a, it's just a general comment, but I also wanna know specifically, were there bonds on this project that would've covered this, and have they already been released?
Mr. Rogers?
I don't, I don't have.
Okay, we'll have to get back to you on that. That's a good question. Or, I guess, Director Schreger, would you know that?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay, okay. Any other public comments? Okay, we're gonna take a roll call vote on Resolution 11215. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Nay.
Mr. Plasky?
An enthusiastic aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Nay.
President Allen?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now, I, do I have an motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Enthusiastic, move.
Enthusiastically, second.
Respectfully, I believe we already had a motion and a second earlier. Councilman Boyer and Councilmember...
Did we vote on the rest of the consent agenda?
But we pulled out the resolution, we didn't vote on the consent agenda yet, we pulled out the resolution and had a dialogue.
I believe you had a first and a second.
All right.
Yeah, so just, just two, all in favor of the rest of the consent agenda?
Okay.
Voice vote.
Got it. Actually, I should give the public an opportunity to speak on the consent agenda, because they[1761.73]